Welcome to the Wakefield Planning Board April 14, 2020 regular meeting. I'd like to call it to order. This is new for us, so we're gonna go as smoothly as we can, I hope. I have a chat window open and I have the participants muted at this time. I'm going to set this up hopefully so we can all see. I'm looking for my chat window now. So hopefully, Matt, if you can thumbs up, can you see the agenda on the screen? Yep, good. So you can see today it's via Zoom. Hopefully, everybody's on this and that needs to be here. The agenda for tonight, we're gonna, I'd like to entertain a motion to move the minutes to the end of the meeting. I'm trying to unmute Matt and there we go.
All right.
Matt, would you like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, you were wanted to postpone them or move them?
Let's postpone them for now.
All right, I'll make a motion to postpone the minutes to our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, all in favor? Guess we raise a hand. Thank you. So the first item on tonight's public hearing is LOVIS AV Extension. And Mr. McGreal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now Paul Revis has that continued. The last time we met on this, I informed the board that we're waiting on the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission elected to hire a peer review consultant. And that was, I know that the person has been retained. It's my understanding from John Ogren at Hayes Engineering that they've commenced some review work out there. I don't know how far they have have gone in that regard. During that process is when unfortunately COVID-19 reared its ugly head. And so that has kind of gone off track a little bit and understandably so.
Okay.
The Conservation Commission has not had a meeting since the last time when I, you know, I'd reported back to what where they were with your board. And so we're, you know, I anticipate that they will be having a meeting in the near future, either Zoom or live, you know, whenever that will allow, and we'll report back. So Paul has marked that as continued. We would like to continue with to I guess your next meeting and we'll see where we are. Like, I don't even know if you know when that meeting is gonna be. And then I would ask the town planner through you, Mr. Chair, if you would like us to give an additional extension. We'd be happy to do so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Brian. Our next meeting should be April 28. So just to do, let's see, and at the bottom of the agenda, we have LOVIS AV Extension Preliminary Plan for November 13th, last reviewed. So it's continued. Paul Revis, do you know when the extension is for LOVIS AV?
Yeah, it's June 30. It says there on the, at the bottom.
Oh, sorry, yes, thanks. Should have kept reading, reading. So down the bottom, June 30. Is that far enough ahead right now, Brian?
It's really up to, I would defer to the town plan and Mr. Chair, whatever, whatever Paul's preference would be on that, we would be more than happy to accommodate, especially considering what's going on in the world right now. So I would defer it to Paul.
Okay. And besides the Conservation Commission feedback, is there anything you need from our board to move forward?
No, we have some work from your board that we, you know, we're gonna have to get back to you. We haven't forgotten that, our punch list, you know, Matt wants to know what's going on with the neighbor, et cetera. So we're not skirting those requests. We've, you know, just kind of have to get back on the rails with what's transpired over the past month.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
So I guess, is Paul there, Mr. Chairman? Could he, could he give an opinion as to what he would prefer on, on timing? If he wants to go, wants an extension beyond June 30?
Paul?
Do you have to unmute him?
Um, I think I've already unmuted. Let me see, I could, he doesn't have.
He's on mute still.
Yep. He's unmuted now.
You can hear me now, yeah.
Yes.
I think we can just continue that to what, April 20, 22nd?
28, I believe.
Is, will you be ready at that point, Brian?
Yeah, I think that, I think the 14th is gonna be too close because, you know, the, I would say the 28th is a practical date and hopefully we might have something of substance at that time.
28th of April?
Yes. Paul, and that election has been moved. Was that gonna be the election, Paul, that the board wasn't going to meet?
Yes. And the election has been moved.
Yeah, so the 28th is fine, Mr. Chairman, if it's the, if it's the desire of the board to have a meeting that night.
Yes, as long as you have the confirmation or the Conservation Commission confirmation before then, otherwise.
We'll let you know.
Yes, okay.
The town election is now June 23rd.
Yes.
And the town meeting is June 8th at the moment.
Paul, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Paul, I had deferred to you on whether you wanted an extension for decision beyond June 30. Would you like that at this point?
Maybe a good idea to September.
Yeah, especially what's going on. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
With the board's permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll file that with the town clerk and get a copy to Paul.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on tonight's agenda, public hearing, zoning map change, 102 New Salem Street to general residence district. And I'm gonna stop this here and I'm gonna share some other. Brian, feel free to mute yourself or Bill. It's fine. Things we need to work through.
He's got his playmate over.
Everybody can hear you, Bill. All right. So you should be able to, let's see. Zoning Article 22. Public hearing, New Salem to general. Let me, let me make sure I'm on the right piece of that. Matt, can you see me scrolling through?
Yeah, you're in North Ave, keep going. There you go.
There's a New Salem Street, zoning article number 23. And I'll read this for everyone. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Wakefield by amending the Wakefield zoning map dated May 2, 2016 by changing the zoning district designation of 102 New Salem Street, Wakefield Accessors Map Number 29-136-012, currently within the single residence district and the industrial district to general district, general residence, as shown on the map below. And all, and amending zoning text 190-7 zoning map such that the revised zoning map bears a new date. The first sentence of 190-7 dot A is replaced with the following. A, exception, as set forth below, the above zoning districts are shown on the map entitled Wakefield Zoning Map dated June 8, 2020. Or see what the town will do about it. So from our previous meeting, we discussed this piece of land and the area to be rezoned. You can see it's hashed here. I'm gonna zoom in on it so it might be easier to see. If anybody would like me to zoom out a little bit more, let me know. Let me make sure I have the chat up first. Okay. Let's see, I'm just reading through the chat real quick. Excellent, up to date on that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure there's no other articles or anything to look at here for this one. So in our previous meeting, we discussed the house that sits here and the neighborhood that surrounds it as a general residence. And down New Salem Street to this, to the left or down, is industrial. And you can see here's the single residence, SR, industrial, I. And this is the area to be rezoned to general residence. So I'd like to have a discussion on the planning board for any comments. Is people, are people, Matt, you're unmuted, Bill, you're unmuted, and Mr. McGreal, you're also unmuted.
All right, I know we had, the applicant was in the last meeting, last meeting we had and discussed this. We still have a public hearing open. At this point, I don't have any other comments until I hear anymore from the public, so.
Okay, I am pulling up a map, like a Google Street View. So we can see what that looks like as well. And I'm gonna share this new share. Actually, this is working out pretty good. I'm not trying not to show my whole desktop to everybody, but just to show. So Matt, you can see the, the Google map with the satellite image?
Yep.
Okay, good. So the property that we're, we're talking about is right in this area. So you can see the industrial here, that line was going right down between. I'm gonna zoom out a little bit so you can see the neighborhood. You can definitely see residential neighborhood off of New Salem to the north. A lot of wooded area and right across the street, there is also a residence. I'm gonna go to a street view. Hopefully, this is helping everybody. So we're looking down New Salem. I believe right in front of us is the house and the property that we're talking about with the cars on the side. And we're looking, we're looking east, northeast on New Salem. And you can see the residential neighborhood behind there. This is across the street to that fence and the wooded area with the residence there. And now I'm spinning more to south, southwest down New Salem Street. So there's, um, so we'll see how this works. What I, what I'd like to do is there's a question on the chat, what's the difference between general and single residence? And I happen to have the bylaws here. And the difference, the single residence, the lot area square footage is 12,000 square feet. The general residence is down to 8,000 square feet. Maximum density, doesn't matter, frontage and width. Single residence needs 100 feet of frontage. And general residence needs 80 feet. The front, the setbacks, minimum setbacks, the front for single is 20, for general, it's 15. For side, under single, it's 15, for general, it's 10. So this is the setback from the property line or, and back or from, to where they can build without going for a variance. The rare for a single residence is 25 feet, while the general residence is 20. Maximum number of stories under single residence is 2.5 stories. For general residence, it's three stories. Maximum height is the same for both, it's 35 feet. Maximum building coverage under single residence, it's 30%, can be used to build on. On general residence, 35% maximum building coverage. Minimum open area under single residence is 40%. Under general residence is 30%. And I believe that covers the difference between general and single residence. Now, Mr. McGreal, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if, first, if I may ask, for the record, I represent Mr. Tavano, Joseph Tavano, who is the owner of this property, as I had stated at the, at the last planning board meeting when you opened this hearing. Mr. Tavano is participating tonight, Mr. Chairman. He's on, he's one of the participants and I would respectfully request that if you would unmute him in case he would like to add anything as we move forward, where he does own the property.
Yeah. Um, what, sorry, Mr. McGreal, one comment that came up too. The general resident allows two units, like duplexes, as well.
Correct, so, you know, basically, the purpose of this request, so this is a petition to rezone the property from, currently, this is kind of a, a very unique and, you know, sometimes the planning board has used this term referring to certain parcels around town, somewhat of a troubled piece of property because the zoning line, as you had shown on the map earlier, splits this lot right in two. And half of it is in the industrial district, which is one of the, one of the most liberal districts for developing and use. And the other half of this lot is in the single residence district, which is the strictest for, for dimensional besides special single residence and use. So Mr. Tavano, as you can see, has a house on here. And he's really, has struggled, as have prior owners of this property, to find a good use for the property, especially considering its zoning split line, as I just mentioned, and the fact that it abuts a single residence district on one side and the industrial district on the other side. So either, if, that kind of plays into the difference between the single residence and the general residence, which we're requesting the rezone to. Mr. Tavano would like the ability to create a two-family or to, or to develop a two-family house on this lot. As you had mentioned, the, in the general residence district, only 8,000 square feet are required for a lot in a general residence district. This lot actually has 20,000 square feet. It's very oversized. A good part of this lot, good, good portion in the back is wetland, it's not developable anyways. There's no desire to split this into two lots and no ability to split it into two lots. And we're, we're on the record here saying that that is not going to be proposed because you, in order to have a lot in the general residence district, you would have to have 80 feet of frontage. This lot on its own only has 100. So to split it, you would need a variance and then we would have to come back for a waiver from your board, as you know, and we're hitting at telling you that we're not gonna do that. So if we ever showed up, or somebody did, you probably play this recording and say, you know, you were never gonna do that. So we just think, as Mr. Tavano had spoken at the last meeting, he's a Wakefield resident, he's lived here basically all of his life. He's developed a number of houses in Wakefield. He does it tastefully, he does it responsibly. This is a way to get another much-needed housing unit into the inventory of town and give a family or individuals a place to live. As I had mentioned at the last meeting, I had shown how this kind of fits with the theme of what's going on at the other end of New Salem Street. As you get up on the Vernon Street, because when you get up there, there's two and three-family houses on, on that end. So it kind of blends in with that theme. And quite honestly, this really, what Mr. Tavano was proposing here has really no impact on anybody. Across the street, as we had pointed out at the last hearing, there's a solid fence, that, a stockade fence, that is the backyard. So we're looking from the backyard, there it is, right there. It's a backyard of folks on, I believe, on Preston Street or Butler Ave, I think it's Preston. And then also, the most direct neighbor is right there, across the street, which is where Laurie's 909 runs the, runs our catering business and the Taylor businesses next door. Mr. Tavano might utilize the existing house. You know, I will say, Joe has a history of doing great work in town. And, you know, we're requesting your board to support this and we'll be requesting town meeting to give an opportunity to do that work and to create two nice residences, residences for folks to live in. And if I may, you know, I think Joe's on, I don't know, Joe, do you have anything to add to that? Or do you think I covered most of it?
Pretty much covered it, I mean, it's the same as last time. There's no, there's no real secret agenda here. I mean, I'm gonna, my, the house I wanna put back is almost, or gonna be about that same footprint with that house is now. You zoomed in some pitches, you can see there's some plantings and some gardens over there on the right and that tree in back. I plan on preserving all that stuff. And the house is, you know, this house is about 26 by 48. I mean, I'd like to be a little bigger, 28 by 51, but no bigger. And I would beat all the general residence setback and would fit with the neighbors. And, I mean, I've spoke with the neighbors and I think they'd rather see something than, all these cars you see here now, I'm glad we're showing this, these pitches. I mean, I rent that to people who don't have enough pocket, but that's all gonna cease. You know, and it'll be a nice, nice residential.
I think, I think part, you know, we talked about this, you know, unfortunately, the, the highest and best use beyond a two-family is, you know, probably a contractor-type yard, which is, you know, a portion of that property in the industrial district could be used and would be valuable for that. And that's what happens further down New Salem Street as you get into the heart of New Salem Street on the left-hand side as you're heading towards Vernon Street. And I don't think anybody wants that. I think this two-family, it's good planning and it would really create a further buffer and a further protection for the residential district that it would have bought.
I have actually been approached by people who wanna make it a contractor yard and use it for, for that purpose, but once again, I would, I mean, I like, I like doing the houses, I like doing the building, I like taking something that's a piece of crap and turning it to something nice, and I think that's a prime lot to do that.
This is all, this is all good information. And Brian, thank you for raising your hand, that was good.
How was that?
And, and thank you, Joe, for adding the commentary. I know you did speak about this in the last meeting. There could be new people here and the public that weren't at the last meeting. So that's, that's very helpful. Unless there's any comments from the planning board, from Bill or Matt or Paul Revis, town planner, I'd like to open it up to the public. But first, Matt, Bill, any comments?
Well, I saw.
Bill, you go first.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, I saw like his idea and of making a residential and keeping the grass and keeping the trees and that stuff. That would look fine to me.
Yeah, I'm gonna switch back to that other, to the actual bylaw change. That way, everybody can see the wording and how it's changing from industrial to general. Well, it's split, right now, it's single residence and industrial going right through, as you can see. Matt, you have any comments?
Yeah, I guess I'll make my comment now before we open this up. I've been thinking about this a lot and I'm really, I really think that this rezoning this one lot, something that is not one of the abutting districts, is getting into a dangerous precedence of basically spot zoning. If we were gonna extend a zone a little bit, if there was already general residents that touched this, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I think what he wants to do, I don't have an issue with him building a two-family house there. I'm just afraid that at some point, we're gonna have more and more of these coming in and they're just popping up anywhere. This, this, to me, really will set a precedence that once we do this one, we're gonna have people coming in and saying, well, you did it over there. Why can't I do it here? And I don't think I wanna go down that, that road right now, so.
Okay.
I want to open it up to the public, but that's, that's my leaning right now.
I understand that point of view. I don't wanna set a precedent for this either. And I, I know we had some comments from the public last time and I would, Mr. Revis, do you have any comments? I think you're still, let me unmute. Okay, you're unmuted.
Mr. Chairman, I, I tend to lean toward moving the line to put this all in the industrial zone.
Okay.
Short of that, the general resident zone is probably the best solution. I think if you moved it and put it in the industrial zone, you would get some type of small business use in that building or some reconstruction of that building. And I don't see that that would be a conflict with what's directly across the street. They would be sufficient buffering required under the bylaw. But that's not what the applicant is asking for, so he's asking for general residence. I don't see that it's detrimental to the neighborhood to do general residence.
Okay.
There's no real great solution. This is a problematic site. The way it's situated, the proportions of it with the wetlands in the back, where the zoning line is now. I don't, I don't, I think that when this zoning line was originally drawn, they must have anticipated that this would have been merged into that single residence zone development next door. But that didn't happen. That's, that's all I can provide right now.
Okay. So I, thank you. I am going to unmute Joanne Schooler. Joanne, does your mic work? Okay. Her mic is not working, but she did send me a message in chat and I can read it verbatim. Does the house today sit on the single residence portion of the lot or does it sit on the line?
One, one thing, Mr. Chairman, I think we, if someone's gonna be doing stuff over chat, which I would prefer not, but if they're gonna do it, we at least need to know their, where they live in, in the normal issue, you know, the normal identification.
I just asked for that right now, so we'll get, get it back.
Can you, at this point, unmute everyone?
I could, but her microphone's not working even when it's unmuted, so there's no way for her to speak into it. Joanne Schooler owns property at 51A Chestnut Street. The chat will also be recorded, by the way. And the question, and I don't know if this is a better answer for Joe, I'll unmute you. Where does the house lie? Or sit?
I can answer that question, if you don't mind, Brian. Right now, the houses predominantly are actually 100% in the industrial district. Will you show this line? I mean, you could look if you went back to the street view, but the, the house is pretty much in the industrial district. And whatever I do there, refurbish that house or add on or build a new one, it's, if you looked at it predominantly where the line is, it's gonna be in the industrial district. I wanna preserve, that's a good picture if I could get this out of my way here. I wanna preserve that green space. Will you look, will you see these raised beds and those gardens and that tree and that green space?
Let me zoom out a little bit so you can get the whole lot. So these are the beds here.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any of that. surface there changing, all being grass, all being plantings, you know, less pavement, and in the house, still, if the line was the same, in the industrial district. If you could draw, so right now, the line goes just about at the angle where the New Salem Street, and you see the green space and the pavement, it goes right there, yeah, but more at an angle, more to the between the machine and that trailer I have there, a little more to the left, it, it would go, yeah, a little more, but something, we got to practice our drawing. And back to, I, I know we just had the comment about making it all industrial something, and, and you know, that was an option, and it was just something, something I thought of and something we, something we discussed, but I mean, I have residents right beside it to the right, I'm not sure they would appreciate that with, with the trucks, and when I spoke to them, I said, you know, you opposed to anything I do here, and they just said, just no, no big buildings, no condos, you know? That was pretty much it.
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to add to Joe, so
Yes.
If, if, the unique thing, and, and, you know, I, I understand that, you know, the concerns about, you know, setting a precedent, but you know, clearly, your board never sets precedents, every, every matter stands on its own, on its own legs. So, and, and certainly, this is a unique circumstance, as I mentioned, when you have this split lot, single residence, industrial. I think, is it Ms. Scola who asked the question on where the house sits?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and that's a very good question, and Joe answered that, that the house, that the structure, if you want to call it a house, it's been used for everything under the sun over the past 15 years, you know, not, not just a house. An oil business ran out of there for years, and, and that sits on the industrial district. The problem with that is that the the problem with that is, the single residence district land that goes with that, or, or basically constitutes the other half of the lot, you can't use it as accessory to any industrial use on the industrial park. And, you know, Joe and I have spent hours with the building inspector, trying to figure out a use that might work here, so if an industrial use goes into that building, you can't park cars or trucks in the single residence district. If you put a single residence, if you put a single residence house in the single residence district, you can't park in the industrial district. It's horrific how these two districts work with each other. Split zoning is, is basically, you know, usually, spot zoning works the other way, where, you know, somebody is contemplating a development on their property in a town, or an interested party actually tries to change the zoning to prevent that development, and singles out a piece of lot. Just because you have a zoning change that affects one lot, does not mean it's spot zoning. If your board looks at a lot and says, this is a problem lot, and this is a solution for that lot, and is thoughtful in the process, is obviously, is, is occurring now, because there's a lot of discussion going on, and the potential uses and impacts on the neighborhood, there's a theme behind that, so it's not spot zoning. And I'm confident, you know, any, any zoning change or map change has to be approved by the Attorney General anyway, so they review these things, and we've had, we've had plenty of zoning changes that have involved individual lots with split zoning. The property that, on Water Street, that has the storage facility that was constructed there, that was before town meeting, and before your board, and that lot was rezoned to business, because it was split residential and business, and it, it had no use, and if you remember that lot, that was basically, for lack of a better way of explaining it, a junkyard. There were abandoned trucks there, there was auto repair, there was a mishmash of things that were going on there, and it was a troubled lot. And your, your board found a solution for that property by rezoning it, and, and I think it's a pretty good use that's gone there, and a use that really has limited impact to the area, and that's what Joe was trying to do here. I mean, I think what Joe is saying is, he's a good citizen, he's talked to the folks, his neighbors, your board has the ability to do this, town meeting has the ability to do this, there's really no harm to everybody, it won't set a precedent with the uniqueness of what's happening here, and, and Joe's saying to you, he needs your help. He needs your help to make something happen here, because people have been spinning their wheels on this property for decades.
Okay.
And trying to figure out what to do with it, and now we have a real responsible owner that really wants to do something nice, so that's where we are, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and I want to ask too, how much of this lot is buildable, if, if part of it is in wetlands? Half of it? Let me, I could, Joe, I'll take you off unmute if you know that answer.
Yeah, I'd say there's about 9,000 square feet of I think they call it
Upland. Upland, yeah.
And I mean, there's plenty of, there's plenty, I mean, 9,000, that's more than what's required for a general residence lot in whole to build.
Okay, and it's in the back, correct?
It's, it is in the back.
Okay. So if, like, across here?
I'd say that's pretty accurate, yep.
Okay.
About there, sure.
So if all this area is wetland, you would only be able to build on this front facing New Salem Street?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
And it's actually more, more, it's more than enough space, like, like I previously mentioned. The, the footprint that I want to build is not much bigger than the house that's there, and I'm going to eliminate, there's an old foundation for a garage that's impervious and all that parking that someone's straight, a lot of that's going to go away.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, at the end of the day, there's going to be a lot less, there's, there's going to be more pervious you know, area on that lot, compared to what's there, there's a lot of pavement on the lot now.
So I see Matt has his hand up. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah. Brian, are there any other instances in town where you've got a, basically, one lot is general residence that's separated from, you know, basically, an island by itself?
You tested my memory going back in the years, my God, I mean, I told you the one on Water Street. You know, don't forget, the, the one on North Avenue where the current apartment building is being constructed, that was single residence, and that was, that was changed to business with the recommendation of your board, that was owned by the current family, that happened a couple of years ago.
That, that also abuts business though, right?
Yeah, but don't forget, that business line has been brought down gradually, so it wasn't, that lot was not business on its own.
Yeah, but again, we're, we're continuing, we're extending a zone a little bit further, we're not basically leapfrogging over other zones to change one lot.
Yeah, I think, you know, as I mentioned, Matt, you've got, there's a theme to this, because you do have general residence at the other end of New Salem Street, and a lot of it. And, and actually, if you look at the zoning map, that, that actually circles back around to, it goes all the way down, so you've got, you know, you, you do have general residence abutting a significant part of this industrial district. The whole, if you, if you're driving towards Vernon Street, the back end of this industrial district backs up to Fitch Court, and all of that area that comes all the way around is all zoned general residence. So there is a significant portion of general residence that abuts this industrial district.
Thank, thank you, Brian, thank you, Matt. Let's see, Joanne Schooler has another comment, and where, where will the people that rent the new home park? Joe, let me make sure you're unmuted.
Sure. You know, it's going to be two small units, same as I've done in the past, I'm going to have four parking spaces, and where, where you see the existing parking, it's going to be right there, just, just smaller. And also, probably be, you know, I don't want to say half the size of that paved area, but I would say, you know, that paved area would be a good third less, so it would be right there on the side. The way the lot's set up, where the house sits now, I mean, it's, I mean, I want it to look the same, I don't want something with big garages in front that take the whole width of the lot. As mentioned, I'm going to, it's going to be pretty much the same footprint where it is now, just a little wider and a little longer, and the parking will be to the right, and, and you'll have Tianan, Tianan Park in 1, 2, 3, 4. Very minimal. Right, right now, I think I have six to eight cars that park there during the day, one of the local businesses rent for me, and they've already said, if I take down the house, they, they want to park trucks there. You know, so it'll be less parking than what you see now. Plus, there's parking available on front, there's plenty of, plenty of parking available there.
So that, that whole other side of, if I may ask you, that whole other side of the industrial district is abutted, abutted by all general residence, you have Vernon Street, Turnbull is up there, Rockland Street. That's, and it actually, actually, almost hooks back around, it goes all the way down, so just, Daniel Road is not single, is not general residence, but leading into it is, and that's the backside, and then, as you go down Preston Street, there's you know, you, you take a look at some of these areas, it's interesting, because Preston Street, as you start down, it is, is single residence, and then it becomes general residence as you get further down in the industrial district, so there is a good amount of general residence district within this area, and abutting the area as a whole.
Thanks, Brian. Any other comments from the public?
All right, well, thank you. It's, it's really important for our board to receive as many comments as possible, so we can understand how people are feeling about changing this. I know, as a board, we're not changing it, we are recommending or not recommending our in, if we're in favor of it and not at town meeting, so obviously, any bylaw change will be voted on at town meeting. All right, well, thanks, Brian, for explaining, and, and Joe, really appreciate you attending and reviewing any comments that we have.
Bring up one point, because I'm racking my brain to try to help Matt. I believe another instance when property was rezoned, was the, when the municipal light plant was built on North Avenue, those lots were rezoned to business back, I think, in 2011.
That, that was the industrial area, right?
No, no, I think it was, it was, I think it was general residence, Matt, and, and it, it would, they were changed to business, that's my, that's my recollection.
Isn't that where the, the original power plant was, or the?
Yeah, but it was always zoned, general residence, going, going back.
So, but all right.
That's my recollection.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, we're going to have, in our next meeting in two weeks, this will be open for discussion as well, so it would be great to get more comments, talk to your neighbors about it, hopefully, they're understanding what this means in that area, good or bad, but it would just be great to hear some comments on how the people feel about it. Thanks again.
Thank you. Great, so are you going to continue this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, going to continue it to our next meeting. I think it's good to have three meetings for public that maybe couldn't make this one, can make the next one.
That's fine.
Let me go ahead to our agenda and share that, back up. That's not the agenda. Oh, come on.
We're coming, let's tab over.
Yeah, you would think, right, but if I click on it, can you see that?
Yeah.
Oh, you can, okay, I thought I had to bring up the clean one each time, okay. Next item on tonight's agenda, public hearing for zoning map change, 3 Chestnut Street, 5 to 5A Chestnut Street, 345 Main Street, 4 Avon Street, from general residence district to business district.
Chairman, if I may, Brian McGrail, representing the Savings Bank, who is the petitioner on this, I know that Mr. Robert DeBella, who is the president and CEO of the Savings Bank, is a participant, so as this gets going, if you'd be kind enough to consider unmuting Mr. DeBella, in case he
I will, let me just make sure this is up. So, I will read this, as I did the last one, zoning article number 24, to see if the town will vote to amend the Wakefield zoning map dated May 2, 2016, by changing the zoning district designation of so much of the properties, of so much of the properties at 5 to 5A Chestnut Street, Wakefield Accessors Map number Okay. Sorry, Bill, I had to mute you. Changing the zoning district designation of so much of the properties at 5-5A Chestnut Street, Wakefield Accessors Map number 12-271-87D, 3 Chestnut Street, map number 12-272-087, 4 Avon Street, map number 12-275-076, and 345 Main Street, map number 12-308-62. There's a plus after that, I'm not sure what that means, and portions of Avon and Chestnut Street, as are currently within the general residence district, to the business district, as shown on map below, and amending the zoning map such that the revised map bears a new date, May 5, 2020, and amending the zoning text, 190-7 zoning map, such that the text is changed with revised map date. The first sentence of 190-7.a is replaced with the following. A, except as fourth, as set forth below, the above zoning districts are shown on the map entitled Wakefield Zoning Map, dated June 8, 2020, or see what the town will do about it. So just to note, Main Street, running north to south, Avon Street, we have Chestnut Street, and if I zoom in closer, you'll see the area to be rezoned, where it has a jagged saw cut on the backside, and the portions that you see up above on the north side of Avon Street would be the BB Library. And I'm going to jump to
Hey, Bill?
Yes.
I have a suggestion, do you want to type in, go to Google and type in Wakefield GIS? That'll bring up a pretty good map also. There you go. Now you can zoom in. You'll see the lots.
Okay. Well, that helps, thank you very much. Little jumpy and skippy on my side, so I'm just glad, I'm just glad this is all working, we didn't have power an hour before the meeting, if you saw the cover of the item tonight, that's our house with the big tree that fell across the street and took out the power lines and ripped all our electric and everything off the, off the side of our house. Yep, it's all fixed, though. Thank you, Brian Higgins Electrical. So, Chestnut Street, Albion Street, here's Avon Street, so I believe I'm in the right spot now. Matt, does that look like there's the Savings Bank, and there's a library up above?
Correct, yeah.
All right, let me bring back, I want to make sure I have chat and everything up. Okay, I have chat up, and I want to make sure I have my participant list up too. And Brian, again, I'm making sure I'm unmuting
It's Bob D., Bob DiBella.
Oh, I see Bob D. I was looking for a last name. Okay, thank you. So Bob, you are now unmuted. Let me just make sure I have everything else covered. Bill, you're unmuted again. And Matt, you're unmuted again.
Yeah, and also, Mr. Chairman, tonight, we also have with us Tom Galvin, who's our architect, who was working for the Savings Bank. And he's on, and perhaps, I don't know if he's gonna have a lot to add, but just at this particular meeting, but possibly. So if you could unmute him, that would be appreciated too.
Okay, all set. I know this came up in front of the board last time as well, and we had a good discussion. Looking at my notes from the meeting, I know there were some comments about why the library wasn't included in the original discussion. And I know the jaggedness of the back of this, how come it cuts through? And there were some questions about why it's in the center of the road when you look at the zoning and how it splits. We had a lot of comments on this, actually. So, and it's, I don't see a lot of the people that spoke up at the last meeting. I don't see them on the list here. But I think it would be helpful if Brian, if you could go over and do a quick little intro on what you and your client, well, what you're trying to achieve.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. What I'm trying to figure out, I don't, what is, and Bob, you might know this. I'm looking at the map. What is Flanny's that's listed behind, besides the bank?
Right here.
Yeah.
That's the old Oddfellows Building.
Is that what they called it, Flan?
I think so, yeah.
I should have known that. So, thank you. So, so what's happening here, Mr. Chairman, and what we're requesting? There's actually two petitions, and the first one is a zoning map change. As you just, you know, and that's the article that you're reviewing now. The Savings Bank currently comprises the lot that's, yeah, so basically, now you got me off track here. Let me get reoriented. So the Savings Bank currently occupies those two blank lots, the lot lots, if you will. The one closest to Chestnut Street is the main branch. The other lot next to it is, thank you, is the Oddfellows Building, which the Savings Bank saved that building after the horrific fire that happened a number of years ago, and incorporated into their campus that currently exists now. What they have done is they now have acquired the Hudson property, the old Hudson Insurance Lot. Nope, the one next to it.
Sorry, I'm in the wrong tool.
Yep. The one labeled 12-272. Nope.
No?
Nope.
This one?
Nope, the one next to it, skinny one.
Hey, Bill?
Right there. Yeah.
Yes.
Can you let Brian mark up your screen?
I can.
That's okay. I don't dare. That's a good job. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think this would be good to test. Let's see. Allow. I don't see the option jumping up for, so if I annotate.
You're doing just fine.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So that building, that lot that you have highlighted is the current location of the Hudson Insurance Building that abuts the two Savings Bank properties. And basically, what that, what the Savings Bank is looking to do is to incorporate that into their existing campus and put an addition on to, or that would connect to both the original branch and the Oddfellows Building. And create some additional space for the bank to function, for its employees, for its customers. And so basically, when I was retained, we endeavored to look at the zoning, working with Tom Galvin in Hayes Engineering, and we had numerous meetings with town officials, building inspector. Paul Rivas is always kind with his time and his input. And basically, this lot that the Hudson Building sits on is, again, a little bit unique because it, we're dealing with a split zone again. Because the majority of that lot is in the business district, but there's a sliver of it that is in the general residence district. And you can see that little sliver with the zone line kind of cuts through our lot. You notice that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Highlight that in a different color or.
Let's see. Funny, because the tools that I'm using, they're split. One, these tools that are highlighting for the PDF tool. And then there's tools from the Zoom meeting that I can also annotate with. So let me see.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what I'm talking about.
So little sliver here?
Yes. Yep, thank you. So that's, that is a piece of the Hudson. That dark line is the zoning line, not a lot line. So, you know, in trying to, for the Savings Bank to plan for this project, that sliver creates havoc with the bylaw. And, and so, you know, the first step that we're trying to do is to resolve that split line. And as we mentioned at the original hearing on this, what happened is that line follows Main Street. As you noticed, that zoning line, but it doesn't respect what's happening on the lots. They didn't give the foresight to look at, you know, what impact it had on the lot. So what we decided to do, we thought it would be beneficial to just clean the whole line up. And we, and basically, that's why we're proposing to rezone, not just our property, but other properties that would be cleaned up when you straighten out that zoning line with the lots. And we incorporated the library because we thought it would be something that would be beneficial to the library. We discussed that
Sorry.
in the prior meeting. And at that time, I think that the board was interested in, you know, how the library might feel about it. There was some public testimony to say, have you got any input from the BB Library trustees? And so we were actually commencing to do that. We, I had talked to one of the members, and we were actually going to attend the meeting. And that's, that meeting got canceled. It was one of the first meetings that didn't happen because of the COVID-19. So we haven't had major discussions, you know, but if the town decided they didn't want that incorporated, we could take it out. It's just a map change at town meeting, you know. There's certainly no benefit to our project or impact on it, but we thought that was good planning for the town not to have a split lot. And that's why that was incorporated. So that gives a little background on what we're doing with the zoning changes. The reason we're including the streets, you'll notice that we have portions of Avon Street and Chestnut Street that we're actually trying to rezone to because Wakefield zoning map actually has, the streets have zoning district designations too. So it's, it's good practice that if you have frontage, if you're in the business district and you have frontage on a street, you'd want at least half of the street that you were about to have the same zoning designation that your lot has.
Thank you for explaining. I'm just gonna jump back to the map and share this. And I want to go. Matt, does this have street view on this map control?
No, you'd have to go to a different, you can go to, if you go to layers, you can, you can at least see the aerials. But you, I don't believe it does street view here.
All right, let me, let me jump to that one setup for another one. Let me do, I have so many things open right now.
Yeah, doing street view of the Hudson Building really kind of shows that it is kind of an underutilized property and probably could be better suited for something else.
Are you able to see the map I have up?
Yep.
Okay, good. Just wanted to start there. Let me go to satellite mode and find Main Street. Artichokes. That would be so good to go to dinner there right now. Let's see, street view here. Turn around. I think this is the view we want, correct?
Yep. Now pan up so you can actually see the Hudson Building. There's really not much of a building there.
No, there isn't. Let me, I'll turn back around. That's a good view.
Yeah.
From the corner of Main. Existing building, and there's that corner that you're talking about that's wreaking havoc on the, well.
No, right.
It's between.
On the other side of the Hudson Building, going up Chestnut Street is where that, where that triangle is.
Okay. A comment came up from the last session as well that I want to bring up. It was about changing to a business district allows the building to be maximum height of 60 feet. It also allows maximum building coverage of 80%. And I know this was a discussion that went back and forth, and there were some comments that are concerns about the Savings Bank could now go ahead and take this building and go 60 feet up and setting the precedence in the business district, changing a bank-owned building to business. I can't remember how it was worded. I wrote it down. But does this now change other properties or set a precedent for other properties with the bank?
If I can shed some light on that, Mr. Chairman. So I think that comment, this, this bylaw change that you're talking about is just the amendment to the zoning map, make it business. I think that comment more pertain to what the next article that we're requesting is, is a special permit relief. That I think those comments pertain to, that the way it was written, we could go higher than 60 feet with a special permit. But not, I don't think that pertained to the zoning map.
Change.
I mean, quite honestly, I mean, you know, if the Savings Bank, you know, would, if they really, you know, with the type of citizen they are, and they would need relief from the zoning board anyways. But, you know, the majority of that Hudson Building is in the business district. So if they really wanted to maximize it, they could take it down and they could, they could ignore that general residence district. And they could go 60 feet up and make a skinnier building. It's not what they want to do.
Right.
And I don't think it's, it's a surprise that, you know, the Savings Bank doesn't want to do that with the, with the, you know, with their relationship with the, with the town of Wakefield and its citizens. They just really want to do something nice and tasteful. As a matter of fact, and I don't mean to put them on the spot, but Tom, if I threw you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, do you potentially, if you had control, could maybe show a little elevation of what they're thinking of doing?
I'm gonna grab one if you give me a few minutes to grab it off.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you can't, that's fine, because I did, to Tom's defense, he didn't anticipate doing that.
Understood.
I wasn't expecting to do a presentation on this building.
No, not, not, I'm not looking for a present, you know, the elevation, Tom, that you have, that just kind of shows.
Yep.
You know, how, what would go in place of the Hudson Building, what the bank is contemplating doing.
So Tom, do you have rights to share? Can you just click on the share and?
I think he's looking for it.
Yeah, what I'll do is request that from you in just a second when I grab it.
Because I do remember seeing like a perspective from the corner of Main, looking, I believe, up Chestnut with a, like a mansard-style roof continuing. Yeah.
I think it's more from looking down towards Main.
Okay.
From Chestnut. But this, you know, I think it's always good for the, you know, I mean, everybody knows when the Savings Bank says they're gonna do something, they usually do twice as much in a good way. So at least this gives the public an idea of what they're contemplating for the property, which I think is very tasteful. And I think some of the concerns, Mr. Chairman, not that there weren't concerns with this, because I don't remember exactly. You might have better notes than me, but as far as the height goes, I think we can address that when we get to the next article. Because Paul Rivas had some concerns with the next article. And I worked with Paul on some wordsmithing, and I also, I think some of the concerns that were raised on the height, as I mentioned at the last meeting, were valid concerns. And I think we have a solution to address that and make it not an issue anymore.
Okay.
We'll get to that.
It's just taken a few minutes to download it from the server.
Yeah, you had to bring it on your computer, Tom, right?
Right.
I could probably email it to you.
And I can hear my wife in the other room on a PTO meeting for Walton. They're trying to figure out what to do for Walton School for all the fourth graders that are moving up to Galvin.
Wow.
Yeah.
Just a different world.
Yeah, I have a daughter at Galvin moving up to the high school too. So both of them are, they're doing okay. But I think they're having a hard time, like, okay, do I never go back to school again?
Hey, Tom, if you give me your email address, I can email it to you if it's easier.
Yeah, if you could, I'm just trying to find the right one.
What's your, what's your, what's your email?
You can always send it to me, and I can show it too. So.
I'll send it to, what I'll do is I'll send it to both. T Galvin, there it is.
That's good, just in case the sharing doesn't work.
Okay. I just sent it. Anything yet, guys? Yep. Did you get it too, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so. I just heard something. Oh, ding.
Well, Tom, open it. Does that look right, Tom?
Yes. Well, this was the last presentation we put together.
Great. That's what I thought. And again, sorry to put you on the spot, Tom, but I.
No, that's okay. It's my way here.
Is this on TV, Mr. Chairman, too?
It's not on TV, no, but it is being recorded. So. Yeah. I'm sharing. If this is what you want to see, Tom, or if you wanted to show.
Right. So this is the start of the presentation. This is the site plan. So if you look in the upper left corner of the improved site, you can see the zone line going through the property. So the building we're proposing fills the site. And then our abutment to the north of that.
So I could, this is the?
The zone line as it exists right now.
Okay.
And you can see the main branch and then the Oddfellows Building. So we're infilling that interior corner, which is what the Hudson Building's on right now.
Right.
And then if you scroll through the page, as you'll see, the perspectives, either the floor plans that we're looking at. And then these are the flat elevations compared to our abutment. So you can see that we're keeping the height low compared to the branch location. So we're not exceeding the existing height of the building as the shallower building. And our abutment is actually taller than what our building is.
Right. So right now, just for everybody, this is Main Street. Right. So right now, just for everybody, this is Main Street. And this is going up Chestnut. And this is the adjacent residence?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think we have about 20 feet between us and the abutist's property or the building itself.
Yeah. And I think the elevation, the next elevation, the next page is, is kind of what I think you want to see, Mr. Chairman, the next sheet. Sheet five. There you go.
This is, yeah.
This is looking toward Main Street down Chestnut.
So this is Main Street over here. Yep.
So basically what we're doing is we're filling that Hartshorn lot with something that will architecturally really fit with what's there. That, that's the end goal after all of what we're trying to do here. And I think another sheet might give a little different perspective on it, the next one.
Yeah, I think the next sheet, or it might be the overlay of the Hartshorn.
Yeah, there's that.
So in that gray area, you can see the existing Hartshorn would fill that area. So you're noticing that we're not really exceeding the height of that building that exists right now by much other than that second story.
Thank you, Tom. So, you know, we just wanted to give you a little flavor, Mr. Chairman, of what the, what, you know, because we're talking about what the savings bank wants to do. And it's always helpful to give some perspective and some.
Right.
Elevation and some life to it. And, and so that's a big part of why we're doing this, but at the same time, we're, you know, we're cleaning up a lot of other, you know, zoning line issues with this map change, which is the first request. And then after this, we'll get into the, the second request that we're asking for the zoning text change.
Okay. Well, thanks for explaining more in depth and sharing the plans, the proposed plans and how that's going to work. I think it'd be good to hear from the planning board to see if Matt or Bill have any comments. I know for me, listening to the comments from the previous meeting, it was more about the library and the involvement of the library and if they have been included. So I guess that would be my first question. Has anybody reached out to the library for their wishes, whether they want to be involved in this or not?
Yeah. So I, I started explaining that, that I did right after our meeting, I actually contacted one of the library trustees and he was, he had got me on the agenda. I think it was going to be the March 18th meeting, I think. And, and that rings a bell as a date. And I was set to go. And that's when, right around that is when everything started happening and that meeting did not happen. And so I, you know, you know, we can do that again. I don't know what their status is. If they're doing Zoom meetings or if they're not, I don't know. Yeah, that would be number one. And number two, with all due respect to the, to the library trustees and the great job that they do. This is kind of town-owned land. So, you know, I mean, the tribe, library trustees run the library, but as far as the underlying land goes, I mean, it's town-owned. It's, it's owned by the town of Wakefield as a whole.
Understood.
So, you know, I think, you know, the town can decide whether they want that rezoned. I think there's benefits, I think there's a lot of benefits to the town to do it. But as I explained, but if the town doesn't, again, the savings bank, we, we don't, we did it because we thought it would be a good idea at the same time to at least have a discussion on it. And if the town decides, no, we don't want to do it, we can remove that. And that can actually happen on town meeting floors and amendments to the map. So there could be some nice discussion at town meeting on that. And, and the savings bank is not, is really kind of has no skin in the game as far as that goes.
I have a question. So was anyone at the town consulted before this, this zoning change was included on their property?
We talked to Paul. And, you know, that was basically it. He can pipe in on that. And, you know, we knew we were going to file for this and publish it. And we said, you know, we'd rather do it and take it out because you can, you can take stuff out, but you can't add it in. And so we didn't want to not have it and then have people say, why didn't you clean that up? You know, why do we want half a library in two different districts?
How about the, the abutists next door? Or have they been consulted with this?
Well, Simeola was, can you go back to the map?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Thank you.
See if, the Google Street map or the actual.
The zoning map.
Yeah. You see it now?
There you go.
Okay.
So, so I can't point, but the director butter to us, no. In Simeola, in Scully, the office at, I think it's for Avon, they're actually part applicants on this. They're, they're applicants to it. You know, we, we put the other person in because they're affected by it too, because they have a back corner that's, that's a split zone too. And we figured it would be, you know, smart to include them. If they don't want to, they don't have to be.
Well.
But it would have no negative impact on them. Because basically it would only expand their rights to be in a business district.
I, I understand that, but that's what I've, what I've heard from people at the libraries that they were a little put off that this was done without any input to them beforehand. And I know it, it, it may be a good thing, but when, when people decide that things are better for you and they go ahead and make a move and don't consult. You know, that's what I'm hearing is that people, people didn't care for it that much, especially the library trustees, because they're getting, people are asking them, did you know about this? And they're basically in the dark. So that's.
Well, I mean, I don't know who you are talking to, because I've talked to some of them and I'm not getting that. So, you know, that's not the feedback I've gotten.
That, that's fine. That's, that's.
And, 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 you know, again, you know, it's not like we, we're trying to avoid them. We actually try to, try to meet with them. And, and not to sell them on it. You know, we're not trying to meet them to, to say, oh, you should do this. We can present why we think it's good, why we think it's advantageous, and they decide. If they say we don't want to be included, then we'll be the first one at town meeting to do an amendment to the map and take it out. So there's no, there's no harm here. If somebody wants to be taken out, they can be taken out.
I, I understand that. It's, it's the point that perhaps consult them beforehand and that, that's all.
Well, part of it is, and I hear you, Matt, I, I respect that. Part of it is, as you know, you have deadlines on filing things. And, you know, so, you know, this was, this, and when you're trying to make a town meeting and you have to get, the process to get a zoning change at town meeting is, is you can't start early enough. Because, you know, the first thing you have to do is you have to write a letter to get it on the agenda for the, for the, for them to even consider it, that being the town council. Then you have to have it referred to your board and all the public hearing process that, you know, Paul Reas and I have done a number of these. And, and he knows better than anybody that it's always, no matter how early you start, it's rushed to do it. So your point's well taken. We'll do our best to coordinate with them. We certainly didn't mean to force something on somebody or step on anybody's toes. Everything that was done here was done in good faith. And, you know, but it can be, it can be taken away if, if, if turns out that they want to do that before town meeting.
Okay. Bill, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we, if people from the library want to, you know, get into this, why don't they come to the meeting and voice some of their concerns? What would be wrong with that? You know, they're upset about this. From what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Somebody should invite them to, to come. While we're talking about it. Maybe they should have even been, you know, into this now. Somebody should have contacted. We're not going to talk about it tonight.
Well, I, I know one of the, one of the issues is that with library trustees, there's no one person speaking for the library.
Yeah.
So therefore, you know, one, one person giving their opinion, it would be like one person at the planning board giving their opinion, like me giving my opinion doesn't mean anything. It's just my opinion. So and, and it'd be the same thing at the library trustees until they all weighed in on it at a meeting and decided then, you know, and them coming here doesn't mean a lot.
Right. But I mean, okay, so then why don't they get together and come up with somebody and have a spokesman come and see what their thoughts are?
Well, I think Attorney McGrath was doing that until COVID-19 put a postponement on the meeting that they had set up, if I understood correctly.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I hear them. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think to defend everybody here, including the library trustees. You know, I think COVID-19 has thrown a monkey wrench into a lot of people's plans and abilities to, to get together and discuss. And especially as your board knows, when it's a, when it's a, a town board, you have the open meeting law requirements. So it's not like the, the trustees can just pick up the phone and talk with each other. They can't do that. So, you know, I'll reach out to the, a couple of folks that I know and, you know, and try to kind of regroup with them.
Okay.
I'm just happy to do that. So I think, I think we're all in agreement that we were trying to do this and then we were kind of derailed with COVID-19.
Right.
Right.
Because that was a direction by your board at the last meeting. Jeez, can you talk to the library and, and kind of see what they think? Because a member of the public had raised that and your board thought it was a valid request. So.
Actually, three members of the public.
Yep.
Yeah, they were, they were concerned and that's, that, that, that's what concerns us. Okay. I think this point has been reviewed enough. Paul Revis, do you have any comments before we go to the public? I'm looking in the chat. We do have a couple of comments in the chat. But I don't have, Paul's muted. I'm sorry, Paul. Go ahead. You're, you're unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. I think it would be good to have some presentation of the library board of trustees and have some comment from them. At least have them prepared before town meeting. So that we don't surprise people in the floor of town meeting with something they haven't seen. I think Brian's working on that. I think that needs to continue.
Okay, thank you.
And this, the zoning change that's proposed for the savings bank, I think is a good thing to try to keep the savings bank vibrant, healthy institution, help them grow in the downtown. And when this is going to the zoning board of appeals, as it will, the zoning board will ask them about additional parking and how they're going to solve their parking issues and, you know, how they're going to design the building, how it'll affect the abutist. So I think that we have a, a good, strong zoning board of appeals that's going to analyze this and make it a good project.
Right.
So I'm comfortable with the zoning change on the zoning lines. I have no additional comments.
Thank you, Paul. I'd like to open up to the public and we. Billy had to mute you, sorry. I'm opening up to the public. Joanne Schooler, 51A Chestnut Street has a comment. Let's see. So one comment is that it does not look like the same architectural style as the original savings bank building. Looks modern, not the same style. And I believe that's when we pulled up the presentation here. So it's brick with the same, it looks like the same material shingles. And please feel free to jump in, Tom. But it looks like the same brick used to follow it. I, I see what Joanne's comment is where the window style and everything does look different here and the entrance. I don't know if there's any, let me see if there's a follow-up here from, from Joanne. She does have another comment, but let's do this one at a time. So this one again is about, does, the architectural style does not look like the same as the original savings bank building?
What we're trying to do is not really match the building. It should stand by itself. What we're trying, we are trying to modernize the building. Again, this is a new facility for the bank. Using similar materials that are on the existing building. If you look at the foundation line of the original building, what we're mimicking there is more the panels as that lower portion. They're accenting the window frames using the brick finish to also frame those window openings. When we come to the side elevation, the majority of that's going to be covered by landscaping in order to buffer us from the abutist. So those panels being a rain screen on that side. One is more for efficiency and energy. And the character is not going to be evident when you're looking at it from the street, because really if we took that elevation, the building of the abutists would be in front of that elevation. So we are trying to mimic the materials on the original building, but not just duplicate it.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Chairman, Brian McGrath, as your board knows, as Paul Reavis just stated, assuming the zoning changes pass, if they hopefully do, this still has to go before the zoning board of appeals for permitting and site plan approval.
Understood.
Very rarely do you, you know, and, and Tom Galvin knows, says very rarely do you present the plan that ends up being what they approve. They go into excruciating detail on architecture. You know, if, if I ever showed you what the original CVS building was downtown, the new CVS, what that looked like when it was proposed to the Shaw supermarkets, they're, they're totally different on what actually got approved. So they certainly will have their fingerprints in this and, 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 you know, there'll be changes made. The main reason we wanted to show you this was not, well, we think it looks nice because Tom always does a good job, but it kind of wanted to give you an idea of the massing that we're not looking to build a skyscraper here, just kind of the, the dimensions and massing of the type of structure they want to build.
All right. Thanks for the explanation. And Joanne has a comment on that. The new building is okay, but it doesn't match exactly. It looks like it is attached. Here's the question part. Is the back knocked out of the existing savings bank building?
Well, when the building, I think she's saying, how, how does it connect, Tom, to the existing savings bank building? So is, is the whole wall knocked down? Is it wide open or is it just that that was?
Yeah, we attach directly to the Oddfellows Building. If that's the question, if I understand that correctly.
And I think her question, Tom, was the main branch, how does the, I think what the question was, are we going to knock the wall, back wall down on the main branch?
More their openings. They're separate disciplines inside.
It'd be like right along here.
As far as the departments of the bank, yes. So the facility that we're building out are going to be new departments or actually relocated departments. So there'll be openings through that existing wall, but the brick finish will be a feature inside of the new building.
Okay.
So there'll be doorways going through, Tom, but not entire wall knocked down?
That's correct. Yeah.
Was that the question, Mr. Chairman, if you could?
Yes.
Miss School.
Yep. How it connects. Yep. And yes, Joanne has confirmed that was the correct question. Thanks. It's, yeah. Interpretation is working well so far. Another question from Joanne. Not clear on, let's see, I'm not clear on what zoning makes sense for the library. It's not a business. And if it's town-owned land, how is that usually zoned? Just, it's more of a comment than a question for clarification. Are town properties, Mr. McGrath and your, Attorney McGrath and your, are they usually one zoned one way or the other?
Yeah. Joanne asked good questions.
I think she wants to be on the planning board.
Yeah.
An opening.
Ask good questions. Though basically, and Paul Reavis knows this, so. Ask good questions. So basically, and Paul Revis knows this, so that, that building is probably in the municipal, I think it's a municipal overlay district, which town-owned land is. And, and basically what it does is it inherits the district, it inherits the use and dimensional requirements of the district that it abuts. And we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. The pitfall in that building is it abuts two dif, it's a split lot itself. So it's, it's kind of a, in my mind, a gray area. And that's why I think there's benefits to the library to have it all zone business. And I would explain that to them. Again, not forcing it on them because, you know, my client's a savings bank and, you know, we don't have skin in the game on the library, but my thought would be that if they wanted to do, for example, say a coffee cafe or something, you know, where, you know, who knows where things are going to go, that you could have, you know, a place where you could sell coffee or breakfast or, or something like that and have internet and, you know, if that was in the general residence zone of their property, I think there'd be a problem doing that. Even though their building is, is attached, I think it will be a problem. And so I think there's some benefits to them in, that might in the future keep, you know, and I don't even know if that's something they would even think about. So they might look at me saying that, say, we would never do that, but that was just my thought, that it might create some opportunities for them that the way it's zoned is, I don't see that that could occur now.
All right. Thanks for the explanation. Any other comments from the public? Hold on, Paul. There you go. You're unmuted. Mr. Revis?
Okay, you look at the use table in the zoning text, section 19023.
Is that?
The school education use is allowed in a, in a business zone. Religious uses. Charitable, philanthropic. School educational use is allowed in the, in the business, nonprofit educational use, library, museum is allowed in the business zone. So the, the front part of the library is in business zone now. So this would actually put the whole library in the business zone so that it would be a conforming use now.
Okay.
It's, it's allowed also in a, in a single resident zone as well, but I think it was better to have it all is one zoning district.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
You know, and, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, with all due respect to everybody, I mean, as a town resident, you know, we can ask all our committees on, you know, what we think is best for town property to be zoned, but there's probably nobody better to ask than the town planner. That's actually the job. To look out for the town and the town's, you know, properties and, and how they're zoned. So you, you just heard it from him on how he feels about that.
I did, I did work with the library at one time and trying to create a outdoor cafe in the front plaza. So this gives them the opportunity to do more with the, the annex in the back.
Right.
By zoning it business. Again, I think it's important to talk to the library. Mr. Chairman, I can mute my mic if you wish and you can leave me unmuted.
Okay. Can you guys see the map on the screen?
No.
No, okay, let me share this then. New share. Map, map. Okay, so I'm just on Avon Street, looking at that backside of the library. Where there's an open, a paved area. And I think that's the post office behind. But that's what Paul was referring to as far as the extent of the library and the, it's almost, is, is the line running down the, the, the old to the new?
It might be.
Yeah, that's interesting. Just notice that.
Yeah, that makes sense that that's probably where they, where the line went.
Yep, and just a comment from Joanne Schooler. Let's see. Just checking. Paul, you're unmuted again, if that's what you wanted.
Okay.
Okay.
The driveway goes to the, to a parking lot that's associated with the library.
Oh, it is? Okay, so it's.
In the building.
Yeah, right here.
Library, if you look at an aerial as a parking lot back there. An employee, it's an employee parking. They have some accessible parking spaces for some of their employees back there. You see, one of them, I think, is a handicap space. It's, it's occupied. That's why I'm not seeing the market payment. And it's also sort of a service entrance for them.
Okay.
I didn't know that, Paul. Save a parking lot, that's interesting. Never knew that.
That's good. Thank you. And let's see, there was participants. Hmm, that wasn't me. Joanne has a, just a follow-up comment. I agree, reasoned talking more to the library, that makes sense and good idea for them to come to the meeting. So thanks. Thanks for wrapping that up. Hi, Bill, you actually raised your hand. That's pretty good.
No, I just, I just to take me off mute, that my dog went to bed.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Smart dog. All right, thanks. Well, this is good and it will be open at the 28th, April 28th meeting as well. So hopefully we'll either hear back from McGrath about a conversation with the library trustees or feel free to invite them to the meeting.
I've already, I've already sent a text message to one of them that I know to see if, if they're going to be meeting and if we could get on the agenda.
Perfect.
Yeah. And, and again, I would like to just restate, you know, that, you know, again, this, you know, we put this in because, you know, we talked to Paul about it. We thought it would be a good idea. But, you know, it's indifferent to us. If they don't like it or town doesn't want it, we can take it out. Has nothing to do with the savings bank proposal at the end.
Okay.
Okay.
And before we just move on, Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add or you're all set?
I think I'm all set. Brian handled it well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks for attending. It's, it's still important to hear from everybody we can. And thank you, Tom, for participating as well.
Thank you.
I'm just going, you're welcome to stay for the next part.
Excellent.
Yep, just going to mute a few people before we go on. Okay. Next item on tonight's agenda, let's see. I guess before we go to the next one, does anybody need a quick break or anything from the planning board? Or Brian, Paul?
Okay. Bill, I have a, I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
Not, not that I'm telling you how to, how to run your meeting, but I think we should, since we've gone over most of these issues, maybe except for the zoning change that we haven't discussed yet, if we just see if there's any comments from the public instead of basically rehashing everything.
Okay.
We're going to keep this open until our next meeting also, just to save a little bit of time because you know, it is, I see what the time is now and if we keep this up, we'll be here until I need to go to work. So.
All right. That's, that's a good suggestion. I know part of the reason for reviewing each one is for people who weren't in attendance for the first one. But we could, the next one is, let's see, we have, I think we have two more. We have zoning text change for 190-31 to add new paragraphs LM. And the, the next one after that is a zoning map change for three parcels of land, west side of North Ave, between 529 and 570 North Avenue. So I know we, we spent a lot of time on that last time. Do we want, let's, should we go over the?
Well, I don't, item six, we haven't even, it's brand new. We haven't got to it yet.
The L and M, we talked, sorry, the L and M, we talked about last time.
Correct.
Right. And the three parcels of land is new.
Correct.
And we have comments on the L and M. Let's see. Zoning text change 190-31. Three, seven. So, so Matt, your suggestion is that we just see if there's any comments about it from the public?
We can, you know, you can do a brief recap, but see if there's any comments from the public, but I don't think we need to basically re.
I'm trying to unmute.
This whole thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill, if you.
Oh, good. I've been trying to unmute you. I've been clicking on it about eight times.
I don't know why you keep muting me up, so I can't jump in when I need to.
I don't think I'm muting you back.
The paragraph L and M have been revised. We have proposals for that for tonight.
Yes.
And so you need to talk about those tonight, please, sir.
Okay.
They've, they've been revised?
Yes, we, Brian and I have recommendations to revise that. And it ties in with the savings bank proposal.
All right, that's fine. And yeah, one thing, if, if we mute ourselves on our end, you, you need to unmute us and then we need to unmute at the same time. It's, it's a little odd, so.
Oh, it is odd. So when I unmute, you're still muted until you unmute?
If, if, if I, if you unmute me like now and I go to mute myself.
Yes.
I cannot unmute without you unmuting me first.
Okay.
A little bizarre.
That makes sense. Okay.
It doesn't make any sense at all.
No, it does, doesn't make sense.
All right. Well, we can hear Paul talk, so that's good. We got, we got there.
Just never mute him again.
I'm not going to mute myself anymore.
That's all right. I could, Paul was yelling at me in the text with capital letters.
Repeatedly.
All right, let's go. Let me go to the documentation for the L and, and M changes.
Yes.
Can you all see this one? And this is.
Keep going further. There you go.
Okay, I'm just matching it to what I have here. So zoning article number 25, suggested amendment to see if the town will vote to amend the Wakefield zoning bylaws by amending 190-3, general regulations to add the following paragraphs after 190-31L. L, the Board of Appeals may allow reductions and/or increases to the requirements of Table 2, Table of Dimensional Regulations of the zoning bylaw, Town of Wakefield, for professional and/or business offices and/or financial institutions by special permit. When such uses are allowed in the business district as listed in 190-23, Table of Use Regulations. Any such reductions and/or increases shall be supported by evidence of lack of suitable land or design considerations or other similar factors. The Board of Appeals must also find that the granting of said special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood or town, of the town. Further amend 190-31, General Regulations of the zoning bylaw by adding the following paragraph at the end thereof as 190-31M. M, the Board of Appeals may allow reduction and/or alteration to the requirements of 190-31G of the zoning bylaw, Town of Wakefield, for professional and/or business offices and/or financial institutions by special permit. When such uses are allowed in the business district as listed in 190-23, Table of Use Regulations. Any such reductions and/or alterations shall be supported by evidence of lack of suitable land or design considerations or other similar factors. The Board of Appeals must also find that the granting of said special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood of the town. Or see what the town will do about it. So there's L and there's M.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe Mr. McGrath has an additional change for L, or FL.
That's true.
Yep. I think I can explain that if you want. Because Paul and I talked about this this afternoon. So the changes that you're looking at were changes that the town planner came up with that I think addressed his concern that he didn't want these to be town-wide. He wanted to limit it to the business district because he was concerned with the fact that, you know, maybe home offices or, you know, law offices on side streets. So that really narrowed it, his language that he put in. And then at the last meeting, there were members of the public that raised a concern about the special permit being able to increase the height of buildings and by special permit and not variance. And, and their concern was that, well, you know, you could get a special permit and build a skyscraper because now you've got no limit on height.
Yes.
As I just explained, for what the savings bank wants to do, it's not an issue, but this bylaw changes not just for the savings bank. As you know from your last meeting, a number of banks in the Chamber of Commerce are, are significant supporters of this article also because of the need for the, for the downtown to adapt to the banks and to keep them there. So when the members of the public brought up this issue at the last meeting, I said, I think it's a valid issue. I, I understand, you know, and that's why we have these hearings because it's, it's a valid concern. And I think we can address it because under the, is, is the folks that spoke at that meeting, they pointed out that in the business district already downtown, the maximum height is 60 feet. And, you know, we don't think we'd like a bank or an office going over that height. So we're coming up with proposal language that would allow dimensional relief except for maximum height. They would not be able to get special permit to go higher than the 60 feet.
Okay, thanks for explaining, Brian.
So Paul and I have kind of, you know, we need to kind of put it together and we can for the next meeting. I think, you know, some of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting by board members, by Paul himself and by the public, we can address. And I think we're in the process of doing that.
Okay. So you can see the updated by you exhibit A, correct?
Again.
Okay, good. This is the one that we needed to have up.
In conjunction with Paul's too, we brought the one, the other one, because Paul's language is, it deals with one issue. My, my change here deals with another issue.
Okay. I don't think I can show both of them at the same time. Only because of the way this is set up.
If we're going to review it again, Mr. Chairman, we can bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to have to bring it back again to the next meeting.
Right.
Paul and I will wordsmith that and we'll get it right so it can be looked at together.
So we, do we just want to wait until this is discussed and then for the 28th?
Well, there may be other issues I'd like to hear.
Okay.
Yeah, we, and I kind of want to know from the board's perspective if we're going in the right direction on this because you heard the comments at the last meeting too.
Well, I mean, as you noted here, except for maximum height.
That was a big.
Really addresses the concerns.
Yeah, that was a big issue with the last meeting. And it was a valid issue.
Yeah, I, I think this addressed some of the comments we had at our last meeting. We may have others tonight, don't know, but I think you're going in the right direction.
Thank you.
I'm here, are you going to, so the, the original article as published has to be presented. Are you going to immediately ask for an amendment at town meeting?
Yeah, I, good question. I actually talked to town council about that in today because I figured that might come up and, and Tom said, Tom Mullin said that it could be done one of two ways. He said, we could actually present. We could, we could present the change as the main article or we could do it as an amendment. we could, we could present the change as the main article, or we could do it as an amendment. And, and, but he said it could be one of two ways. He said, the way the, the way the planning board would handle it for their recommendation is you would, i- if, if at the end of the day, you decide to support this and recommend approval at town meeting, you would say you're recommending it, um, with the incorporating the changes that were discussed uh, at the town, at the, uh, at the, at your public hearings. So I can figure that out with Tom Mullin, but it's a good question, Matt. He said it could be done both ways.
Yeah, is it possible, is, I don't know if the warrant has actually been published yet. Is it possible to add the amendment, the amended, your, your proposed amendment in, so people aren't really surprised?
No, I don't think it is, and, and they're not surprised, because, you know, the, the bylaw is not changing, it's just being fine tuned. And as Tom has said, and I've talked to Tom about this, he said, that's the purpose of your hearings. You know, so if you, if you, if you, if you couldn't make, you know, little changes or tweaks uh, at your hearings, it would, it would, it wouldn't be fruitful, so. I mean, Tom Mullin is, is comfortable with it. But I don't think, I don't think the article can be changed, Matt. I don't think that can happen. Because, because that will go against the publication that was in the paper.
All right, so we, you know, the, the planning board could recommend favorable action on the proposed amendments to be presented at, at, you know, as, as we get up, you know, as we make our recommendation, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, as, as people enter the room, town meeting, or before the meeting, there would be a packet. Maybe four sheets.
Right.
Each of these articles would be on a one sheet. And we'd have proposed language there at that point that would refine the language.
Will it be addressed the same way where it's in red as shown here?
It can be, yes. So that it would need to show that it's, how it's different from what is actually published in the warrant, and that may need to be fine tuned from what we have right now, but we've done this in the past where the proposed motion is on the table out front when people walk in.
Right.
And we explain that.
So, so to help, you know, I, I'm just reading from my text, changes in text, and, and it says, the planning board has leeway in changing the text of proposed amendments after its hearing. After all, the purpose of the public hearing is to obtain public sentiment so that proper revisions can be made. Uh, there is nothing in the statute requiring another hearing whenever after one hearing the board decides to amend what had previously been proposed. The amendments were not of a fundamental character. They did not change the identity of what was actually being proposed before the board. They were designed merely to perfect the proposal for the benefit of the town.
So Brian, is there any time limit on that, or has to be, okay?
No, just, just.
Warrant was approved last night.
Right.
Yeah.
For publication.
So does it say anything, Brian, about when the warrant's approved?
Oh, no, that's, this is, this is, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
This can be changed on, and, and it can also be changed because, you know, i- i- what we can do is, you know, what, I think the way it would work is, for example, as Matt suggested, one of the ways to change it is that the original article is presented as published, and then I, as proponent, would propose an amendment.
Right.
And the planning board would say that we recommend favorable action, you know, only if the amendments that we had suggested are brought forward to town meeting. So it can be done, uh, and Paul, maybe you and I will have another conversation with Tom Mullin prior to the next meeting, just so we're all, all in sync.
Yes.
If that's okay with you.
Okay, um, any comments, Matt, Bill?
No, not at this point.
Um, I'm looking at the chat, are there any comments from the public? So, um, this will be continued to the next meeting on the twenty-eighth. We can discuss more of any changes or alterations to the suggested amendment. Okay. Next item on tonight's agenda is a new item. Another zoning map change for three parcels of land west side of North Ave. Sorry, I got too many things blocking it, between five ninety-two and five seventy North Avenue from single residence to general residence. So we did review what the single residence and general residence differences are. Um, what I'd like to do, um, is pull up.
It's nine o'clock.
Okay, it's nine o'clock.
That's for Matt.
It's my bedtime.
Bedtime, Matt.
Leave your home, Matt.
Okay, so zoning article number twenty-two, can you all see the screen? Matt, is that clear?
Yep.
Okay, good.
I wanna pan up a tiny bit, but.
I will, once I read. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Wakefield by amending the Wakefield zoning map dated May second, twenty sixteen, by changing the zoning district designation of three parcels of land on the west side of North Avenue between five ninety-two and five seventy North Avenue, shown on the Wakefield accessors map as parcel forty-seven B on map two A. Parcel two on map two A and parcel forty-seven L on map two A. Currently within a single residence district to a general residence district as shown on the map below. And amending the zoning map such that the revised map bears a new date, May fifth, twenty twenty, and amending the zoning text one ninety dash seven zoning map such that the text is changed with the revised map date. The first sentence of one ninety dash seven dot A is replaced with the following. A, except as set forth below, the above zoning districts are shown on the map entitled Wakefield zoning map dated June eighth, twenty twenty, or see what the town will do about it.
So I see a typo, Mr. Chairman, that I've made, uh, the May fifth date.
Yes.
That should be June eighth, because that's the new date of town meeting. And I'll make that correction for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
On all the map change items.
Yeah, I had in my notes to comment down that at the end, but thank you for bringing it up. And it's here. If you can see the highlight, yeah.
It's like when you do it once, you've gotta find it five places.
That's true. Okay, um, let's see, we do have a couple of other. Here's a the bigger plan of, of the area, and North Avenue running up to Wakefield Subaru. The wetlands and the marsh, excuse me. And, and the river that runs and stops right here at the road and goes into a culvert. Um, we have some better shots of that as well. The property that was recently built on North Avenue, and then the one that's hmm, eighty, ninety percent complete looking now, right here on North Ave. On the south side of this, we have the Knights of Columbus, where the parking lot goes all the way to the back, close to the train tracks. And then Walcott Street, which is a dead end. Across, uh, along this whole area, it's all wooded and there are no sidewalks. I know this has come up in a previous meeting, that the intent is to have sidewalks in front of the new properties. And I believe down to Walcott Street, I could be mistaken on that.
Would be terrific to mention that at town meeting, that that's expected.
Yes, um, that came up in a, a different meeting for the, um, revitalizing Wakefield. Uh, let me get out of this. Let me show North Ave. Let me make sure I'm sharing the right one. Okay. So this is the property now. This would be without foliage, and you can see it's a little dated. There's the building that is operational. The site that now houses the construction for the additional building, and here is that river that runs underneath North Ave, out to the lake, from the marsh and the wetlands behind.
Would, yeah, an intermittent stream or a stream?
It's, it's pretty wide. At its widest point, it's about ten or twelve feet. I walked up in back of this and walked by it after dropping off my car at Wakefield Subaru a couple of weeks ago, just to see exactly what's going on there.
I don't know how the Conservation Commission would classify it, but that would be a, that's a significant word, river versus stream.
I'm sorry if I'm using the wrong verbiage. If, um, we look at it here, there's really no as I move up. Can you see the map that I'm moving up, Knights of Columbus?
Yes.
Okay, so if I go to pure map, there's nothing showing. Matt, do you think that other map that would have a better shot? That, um.
The accessories map? I, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll go back to satellite. So I don't think we're gonna get a name of any type of stream or river or, um, waterway. There it is with the foliage. A little bit of an older map. And here it is without the foliage. So just to give us a better idea of the land that we're looking at. And Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's where this row of trees and bushes are running from the utility pole back?
Yes.
And if we jump down to the Knights of Columbus, we can look back, you can see there's their parking going back, and it, it seems to be somewhere where this tree line is.
Correct.
Okay. So Brian, if you'd like to talk, and then we can have some comments from the board, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if there's anybody you'd like me to unmute, let me know, unmute.
Dana Lopez is on, and Dana is my client.
Okay.
And Dana is, uh, one of the two owners of the property.
Okay, they're unmuted.
I think, um, yeah, well, this kind of gives a good, a good strip, a, a good idea of the property, so. You know, we had talked a little about this property when we were talking about the, the rezoning on New Serene Street, and I mentioned it with the, with the current property that was the greenhouse that you saw earlier in, uh, your presentation, Mr. Chairman. And that property was rezoned to business, so this, all of these properties, this property was owned by the McManus family, which connects to the auto dealerships when they ran, you know, the Ford dealership and the, and, um, they had, um, Ford was big, and then they had Volvo for years. So this was kind of, and, and they have sold that property, and this was kind of the last piece that they had. Uh, and Dana Lopez and his partner Ray Nickerson recently purchased this, uh, property. They, they had it, it's already been delineated, all the wetlands has been delineated by the Conservation Commission um, at a public hearing, and the, the wetlands has, has been locked in, so we know exactly what we're dealing with, with wetlands. The property's own, single-family residence. This is just kind of a, a little bit of an odd area, again, you know, you have the Knights of Columbus on one side, you have the apartment building on the other. So Dana and Ray approached me, and they said, you know, we've acquired this property. You know, we're, we're interested in, in doing the use, and one of the, one of the uses that they talked about was to continue the theme, uh, and to rezone it business and build another apartment building to kind of match what's been done. And we talked about it, in my honest assessment to them, because, you know, that's the way I always talk to the board, honestly, is that they said, I think it's gonna be a hard, hard thing to get done at town meeting. I think, you know, you, you those two were a little bit further down, now you're getting a little bit more into the residential area. And I think, you know, not that it, you know, it's hard to predict what town meeting is going to do, but I said, I think you could be, you know, potentially wasting a town meeting opportunity here to do that. I said, you know, my thought would be, um, that to do a general residence zone here. They can probably get three, three buildings in here. Um, that's what they figured out with the wetlands, the back, the rear end of the property is mostly wet. And, um, if you might maybe wanna go to the zoning map change, Mr. Chairman, if you could, that might help.
Is this the one you were looking?
This works, yeah, this works, this is fine. Um, so, you know, where it says locust, there's a lot of wetlands back there, it's really not developable land, the majority of the land that can be developed uh, is up front. And, um, you know, basically, you're next to the apartment buildings, you have the Knights of Columbus next to you, it's not a real good side of the street, if you will, right in that area to do single-family residences. What Dana's thinking about, if you remember what your board did with the Oxbow type pet shop, Oxbow Pet Shop type development that Paul DiBiase built. Potentially, you could have like one driveway, because, you know, who, you know, if you did single-family homes, you would end up with three driveways coming out into North Ave, um, so maybe you could, you know, where, where general residence only has eight thousand square foot requirements, um, unless frontage, something could be worked out to maybe, you know, angle the houses and, and have one access point for all of them. Uh, all of the units that would be built. And, you know, as you come down North Ave, um, you've got those apartment buildings, you got part of across the street is the, um, is the Office Park, and then on the opposite side of the street is Single Family. Um, so, you know, that's where I thought to go business here, probably would have really, you know, been kind of encroaching on those single families. Um, so we thought that the general residence would be respectful of what's going on on the other side of the street. But as you come further down North Ave towards that Veterans Field, you start to see, even though, um, it's own single-family residence eventually does become general residence, there is a, a spattering of, uh, multi-families in there. There are one families, about the first five, as you go away on the other side of the Knights of Columbus are single families, because you have two that have Walcott Street addresses. But as, once you get to five thirty-six North Ave, um, maybe you can kind of scroll that map further down towards the light department, is that possible? Now you lost it. You get two families, five twenty-eight's a three family, uh, five eighteen's a two family. So I, I think it kind of goes, um, with the theme. And then, you know, the other thing, you know, my office is in Lakeside Office Park, and one of the things that I've consistently mentioned here, I actually think that the development of this property in a tasteful manner is gonna improve, it's gonna serve as a traffic calming effect on North Ave. Because when you're coming off of the highway, you're heading towards downtown, you go by the apartment buildings, and then you go by my office buildings, which, you know, they, they, there's no front doors on those buildings, in all's car, all cars tend to just pick up speed. And right now, you have that wooded area, and they just accelerate, and, and they go fast. And I think if, if, if this is developed in a tasteful manner, I think it's actually gonna be a traffic calming, because you're gonna have residences there, people tend not to go as quick. As you, and how many times do you see the speed traps in the, uh, in the KSC?
Yeah.
Parking lot. I, I know going and coming to work, don't, don't be speeding, because they're gonna be sitting there. Uh, it's an automatic spot. You go by that last apartment building, um, and you hit the gas. And, and then you eventually come into the residential after the Knights of Columbus street, Walcott Street. But I think that this might actually be a benefit. And, you know, I think this is a, a reasonable proposal, considering what's happened in the area. I think it blends well. I think it will give your board, uh, your board would have to participate in what we're talking about with that type of development. Uh, and so with the zoning board, and your boys have worked well together to figure out how to, you know, utilize unique pieces of property, and I think that to rezone this general residence gives us the opportunity to, to try to work together to make something nice there, that will be a benefit for everybody.
Thanks for explaining.
Yeah, and we're happy to answer any questions. And, and actually, you know, I think Dana, you can pipe in too, but, you know, Dana, um, uh, and Ray. And Ray had said, you know, a big part of that back piece, you know, they might be interested in donating to the town, right Dana?
That's correct. That's correct.
I mean, you know, because it's really. We're happy to entertain the discussion with that with, with maybe Mr. Mayo and then perhaps the Conservation Commission of the Town Council. That they might want to put that on town inventory because it doesn't provide a lot of benefit to where the, where the buildable lots are going to be.
What do you mean by donating?
Basically, you know, contribute, you know, just do a gift to the town of the land. Because it's wetlands. It's just wet and, and there might be benefit. You know, sometimes a town, sometimes a town has not wanted just wetlands. They haven't seen a lot of benefit if this, if they can't do trails or something like that, but there might be opportunity here.
Now, wouldn't the town rather you pay taxes on it?
Yeah. I mean, there's not a lot of value on it because it's wet.
Right.
But you know, and sometimes the town doesn't want the responsibility of it, but. It would be, it would be a discussion that we could have. Maybe they do want it. Maybe they're interested in it. Maybe it, maybe it provides some watershed for them that they'd like it.
Right. Okay.
But it's something that we could consider when we divide it up with your board.
Understood.
Piece will be cut off the back and potentially given to the town.
Now, thanks for the explanation. I think everybody that needs to be unmuted is unmuted.
If I could just add some, these, these yellow lines.
Yes.
Are three pieces that exist. Dana and Ray own the whole thing. So just kind of ignore those lot lines on how this lot will, the land will eventually be planned.
Okay, let me, um, let me go to the other. Oops. If this helps.
Yeah.
Maybe we stick with this one then?
Sure.
Just, and if anybody, discussion wise, if somebody wants to go back to the aerial view or street view, let me know.
Yeah. And we've had a discussion with, with at least one of the neighbors I think is here tonight. You know, one of the things that we talked about was, you know. How you're going to deal with a street cut here, you know, and access. And I think. You know, the type of development we're talking about gives us some flexibility on where we want to put that. And where, you know, as it relates to Fielding Street and the other streets that are on the other side of North Ave.
Well, that's a, that's a good point that you bring up. If, um. I want to share back to. The Google map and. Right now. Let's see. The property, that's not too up to date, is it?
Close. That just shows the, it shows the foundation of the new building going.
Right, right. That's, but looking at how this is and it wraps around the building, it's just odd how, and I know this has nothing to do with. But this is something Bill pointed out and after we were looking at the plans after the last meeting. It's like you can see the sidewalk and there's no access for a pedestrian to get anywhere. It's, it's like they're coming right into parking areas. It's just such an odd. Configuration. But thinking about access, you can see how this comes in a one-way and loops around out. I don't know how many people abide by that, but. You can see there's a one-way traffic direct, direction for circulation. So what I would, what I care most about with this property, I would like to see some of this developed and I would like to see some of the trees remain. But I would make sure that there's some type of pedestrian access from whatever's developed there to a sidewalk. To be able to cross somewhere across to the lake and the paths that people usually take. Part of my goal on the planning board is to make Wakefield, Wakefield more walkable.
Yep. Well, that makes sense. Right, right Dana? I mean.
Yes. That's currently what we're doing in Revere. They, they. They make you do granite curbs and sidewalks in front of any commercial property developed or any property on main roads.
On main roads, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to be happy to, we know, well, as I said, this is going to be before you anyways. When it finally gets developed. So we hear the message and we're receptive to it.
I just, I just wanted to point out one thing about the property and the access to the back. There, there is. More up dry land in the back. If you go on this map, you'll see. Towards the lot line of the Knights of Columbus and the railroad tracks, that back corner. Is dry land. Could be. If the town didn't want the property, there could be a right of way to get to the back portion of that property. I don't know for what use they would have to get to the wetlands or to the tracks. So I'm, I'm not sure, but there is more land back there that's potentially usable.
Okay.
If you scroll, you can see it's not, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty dry there as well.
Along. Let's see. Annotation tools. I'll give this another. I have a spotlight tool. That's not going to mark, but along this whole area. So there's the tracks.
Correct.
Yeah.
And along, and along the lot line of the Knights of Columbus, we're really only interested in the front portion of the land. Approximately 200 feet in from the street. That's what we would need for the, the development in the front, but that whole back portion. If it's, if it could get to, if they had a right of way or a way to get back there, that's, that's. Usable land for the city or whatever they wanted to do back there, if they wanted, if they wanted the property.
Right.
Well, they might want it because who knows what, you know, maybe 50 years or whatever is going to happen in the Knights Columbus. They'll probably be there in 50 years, but if it was ever sold, maybe the town would want some interest to have.
Okay.
Who knows? But you know, we can, you know, you know, as we go through this process, we can certainly talk to the town administrator and the town council if there's any interest. Once we, once we figure out what our layout is going to be and what we have left over.
Has the Conservation Commission? Had any input on any of this yet? I mean, I know it's early.
Yeah, no, they have. They've actually delineated the wetlands. So we know exactly where the wetlands are.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Have they talked about any access for there for like a boardwalk for bird watching or anything?
No, no, because we're going to have to file with them, Mr. Chairman, for, you know, for the development. Their, their only role so far has been to agree what the wet, wetlands are. What the wetlands want on the whole property. And they have agreed to that. They've locked that in. So now we can kind of plan where we can put our access, where we can put our houses and then. But where we're going to be building near the wetland, we anticipate we'll have to file a notice of intent with them to actually construct.
Okay.
And that's when some of those conversations might become more appropriate.
Excellent. Thank you.
But the first thing, it all starts with the zoning. It all starts with the zoning. So, so you know, and I think. You know, the general residence lots are smaller lots. So there's going to be more land left if you're doing 8,000 square foot lots versus the 12,100 feet of frontage.
Right. And that's the reason for a single to, to general, right?
Yeah. And it would be six units rather than three.
Matt or Bill, I know we had a, a short discussion. At the end of our last meeting together. Are there any comments you want to share?
Yeah. What's the, what's the frontage on North Ave?
Approximately 300 feet. The, the three lots right now, the way Hayes has them laid out, they're approximately 100, 100 feet per lot.
Yeah, basically what the, that's a good question, Matt. The lot, the lot now allows for three A and R lots. In the single residence. Yeah.
So based, so I, and forgive me, but we've. Been around the board long enough to know that. A nice proposal. In the initial stage, it doesn't always happen. So. Potentially what could happen, we, we zone this to general residence. And then we just get three duplexes lined up along North Ave, correct? That's a potential.
Well, it'd be inset. We're, we're looking to do a common driveway, like a loop that would come in. So that the buildings would not be on North Ave. More or less it'd be, it'd be private, more or less private.
I, I understand that. That's what your plans are, but. People's plans don't always hold up and things change. You might flip this and the next person that comes in is going to. The quickest, easiest thing to do, which would be to put three duplexes right on North Ave with three driveways. Or potentially six driveways. So I mean, I'm just looking at what could happen.
You're right. No, you're right. Yep. We're telling you that he doesn't want to do that, but the point's well taken.
Yeah, there's no way for anything to be locked in. So that, that's.
There's no approval with conditions? Could they approve it with conditions or no? You can't do that.
We're, we're not approving anything. We're, we're just, we're just saying we either allow the zoning change, you know, we're favorable. Recommend, we favorably recommend it or we don't. That's about it. We have no say over exactly what's going to go on here.
Yeah, town meeting will have final say. So the town people will. Approve this bylaw change or not. And then, then the next steps will go forward. If they don't approve it, you know what your options are. If they do approve it, your options open up.
Okay.
Well, this, this is, um, this is the public forum to allow anybody to ask questions to understand more about it, which helps us as a board. Understand what the public's thinking too. And hopefully it doesn't all wait till town meetings for us to hear it. Bill, I think you had.
Yeah, I had one comment. This right here is the Knights of Columbus, correct? So. I know this has, I mean, I used to go all baseball meetings and everything there. And coming out, this has all over here. Is like, when it rains out, all this whole lot roof, everything goes that way. And this is soaking wet all the time. So is, is this part of the wetlands over here? That's what I'm wondering.
So Billy, um.
Wet.
In this area here? Sorry.
Right down here. It's not?
Right in here?
Right here. Right here.
I can't see what you're pointing to.
You see it? You see the parking lot for Knights Columbus?
Yes.
Okay. All that water runs off all the time, right down.
Into the street?
Probably a three-foot, no, not into the street. It runs into those bushes and everything right here. Yes. Right, right. Yes. In this area. And I see that it's very wet in there. It's very, very, very wet. So. You develop that area in this, in here and start to, where is all that water going to go? I, I know that for a fact because it's always wet.
Well, in, in back of the delineated property lines, there is a, it's not a stream, but there is a wetlands that. Goes across there. So when I talked to Hayes, he had mentioned anything that was going to be done in the back would have to have some kind of a crossing. Because there is some, there is some narrow area there that does collect water. I agree.
Collects it off a lot. I, I've been, I've been there. It, it really does. I mean, because I parked my car along here and I looked down in there. Before, a lot, a lot of times, you know, there was a lot of water, snow. It's pushed in there and then all the water. I mean, it's. It's, it's pretty wet.
Right.
It's pretty wet. And you know, I know people used to throw things in there too. Bach springs and stuff, I used to say. It's very bushy. And, and very wet. So I don't, I don't know where that water would go. If that got all filled in.
Well, we're going to be developing in front of that. We wouldn't be back that far. Basically, if you look at the footprint of the two previous buildings, that lot line, that, that line is going to come. Pretty much straight across where the dry land is.
Okay. But I mean, I'm still concerned. The only reason why I'm still concerned is because I know this, this parking lot is raised up and I know. I know the water is running towards that way. So.
Plenty of what, plenty of wetlands, Billy, to be able to, um. We got plenty of wetland to put our water in the back and we got plenty of places to divert water to. Because you know, we have acres and acres of land.
We don't want that running to North Ave. You know?
Oh, Brian, you're muted.
Somewhere.
Brian, you're muted. I didn't do it.
I did it by mistake. So, no, I know, Bill, but what I'm saying is that's going to be part of our approval process with the Conservation Commission when we go to develop this. They're going to look at all of that. And we've got plenty of places up, up back to put the water.
Okay. I mean, I. Okay. But that's a little concern for me. On that part of it. And, uh, yeah.
Okay. I, I may know we, um. Once we go through, once town meeting happens and then there's a clearer picture of what can be developed. I know in the past, we've looked at drainage and drainage and more drainage with a few different options. Whether it's underground storage or if it's some type of more natural. So. I guess once we figure out what's going there and you guys present that, that will, we could, we can discuss.
Yeah, but I know, I know I've seen the plows, just plowing right, you know, every, all the snow goes right in that, that area. I know that.
Right. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I do. Would you be able to get your variance and build what you proposed if this was a, if this was its own business district? Or would that not be, would that not happen?
Could you, I'm a little confused, Matt, what the question is.
Well, you're proposing a development here.
Yeah.
Three houses or whatever. Would you be able to do that if this was zone business instead of general residence? And the reason why I say that is for the exact same reason as the past one. If you're going to extend a zone, I don't have as much of an issue with it. If you're going to hopscotch over and pick. A general residence zone, which would be most favorable for you and for anyone else. I'm not really. That much in favor of that again.
Yeah.
But if you could do this and just extend the business zone, why not do that?
Well, because I think it's because Dana and Ray are trying to do the right thing by the neighborhood. So i, i, if, if. If you, if we could do two-family houses in the, in the business district. But the problem you're going to have is, is it goes the opposite way of what you said before. Then they could, then someone could then put an apartment building there.
Yeah, but they're, they're not planning on doing that.
No, they're not. But, but, but no, I know. But I'm just, you know, that was your concern on the other side. So I'm telling you what, you know, what, what the concern is. Yeah, you could do that. And, and I quite honestly think. With all due respect to the planning board, I think that's going to be a much tougher sell at town meeting. Because I think town meeting, I think the folks in the neighborhood and, in the, in the town are going to say, well, you know. A tasteful two-family development here with one access is a reasonable development. We know the, you know, what we're going to get is two, is three two-family houses. That's all it can fit. And I think if we're at a town meeting and say, we want to zone this business, but we're going to do three two-family houses, I think it's going to create some anxiety for people in the neighborhood to think that maybe that won't happen. At the end of the day, and they're opening the door for something maybe a lot bigger. That's how, in, in the end of the day, you need that two-thirds vote in, you know, a town meeting. And I think it's, it's a, it's an easier vote to get with the general residence.
So that's fine, but I'm, I'm just letting you know that I'm, I'm not, again, I'm, I'm not leaning towards. Being favorable to this for the same reason. It's, it's starting to pick. You know, the most favorable zone. And in hopping in wherever you feel like it in order to. To get a favorable development in there. And I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm just telling you straight up, I'm, I'm not, not. Too keen on that.
I mean, but that, that's the purpose of rezoning. I mean, that's the, that's why you do this. I mean, you know.
I, I understand that.
So I mean, you know, any zoning district is not locked in. I mean, that's, that's what the, part of the, part of the process of the, of the planning board is to look at it and say. You know, I mean, look what happened down there. I mean, I can tell you that there were three properties that changed the business. And they all trickled down. It doesn't mean that keeping going business is right for the neighborhood or right for the town. Otherwise we'd end up in Melrose doing it. You know, at some point, but it also doesn't mean that single residence on the other side is right for this property. And that's part of the planning process. And you made that decision, not me. You know, we think it's a good planning process for what we think it fits. It works. And it's a good place to put it. It needs that zone, but that's your decision, not ours. But I don't, I would respectfully say that you shouldn't box yourself in as to say. If you're putting a new zoning district somewhere where that doesn't exist, you just can't do that because that's not true under the law and it's allowed.
Well, I, I get that, but I'm also looking at it that. And we always have assurances that things are going to happen and they don't always happen. So.
So I get that.
You know, when, when at some point, if there's three duplexes here that have six driveways that back out onto Main Street with no sidewalks, and people are going to say, what the hell did the planning board do? Why did they, why did they allow this? That's what I'm looking at, is the worst case that could happen here. So we've got no protections that that won't happen. So that's why, um, I'm making these comments.
Oh, I appreciate that. I, I, and, um, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, Dana, you know, maybe you can tell the board a little bit about yourself and, and, you know, what your desire is for this property. You know, I can, I can tell you, I can tell you that, I mean, the public record at the Registry of Deeds, you know, there, there's no one, there's no financing on this property. There's no bank that's going to take it over. It's, it's, it was, it was, it was purchased with no financing. They, you know, they've told me that they can hardly wait to get going on this. I mean, your intent, Dana, strong intent is to develop this property, correct?
Correct. Uh, we have, we have actually had an agreement on this property for a few years. And there was issues with title and members of the family on how to sell it. And, um, so we waited for this property. We were, we were friendly with the, uh, the car dealership owners. And so when we first were looking at this property, I, I believe they were just getting the first possible rezon for the apartment building. And then the other one got rezoned. We thought, okay, we're going to be able to put another apartment building here. So this is going to be a worthwhile project. And then we got the property and spoke with Brian and, you know, sensitive to the neighborhood, he, he advised us against going for the commercial zone. But the problem is there were houses down, down that street. So now there's rezoning of the commercial and the buildings. It's really handcuffed this property in between, you know, the Knights of Columbus apartment buildings on the right, Mosh in the back. It's just not a desirable single family zone. I mean, I just don't see that, uh, people are going to want to raise a family on these three lots. That's why we, we think townhouses is the best, I'd be thinking apartment buildings the best fit, but we, you know, we're going away from that. We, we think, uh, the next best thing would be a townhouse, duplex townhouses, because they don't bring families. Uh, it's usually, um, you know, business type people or people who are going to work in Boston, maybe go take the train. It's not going to be an area where people are necessarily going to want to invest in a nice single family home. If we've got to do single families there, they're going to have to be on the cheaper side, you know? And it just doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to be a worthwhile venture to do it that way.
Just, um, curious, um, what were the buildings, the apartment buildings previously zoned as? Were they part of single residence?
Correct.
Okay. So these two, that's where the two apartment, where the buildings are, right here and here. Those were part of single?
They were part of, they were part of single, correct.
Okay. And zoning change to business?
I think, I think further down, so.
One, I think one more lot there too.
Yeah, at least one more, maybe two going, yeah, that was rezoned too. So I'll put another X.
Here?
Yeah.
Is that Juliana's Salon or is this Juliana's?
That's Juliana's Salon right there. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those, those three. And, and actually I'm not positive. I think it might be, let me see. No, that's it. That's got to be it. Yeah. Yep.
Do you know, do you, do you know the heights of those apartment buildings by, by chance? Are they up to 60 feet, which is allowed or?
No, I don't think so. I, I think the one,
Four stories?
One's three and one's four.
Okay.
The first one's three, first one is three stories.
And the second one closest to us is a four story.
Okay.
I don't think, Matt, that, you know, whoever, you know, we're saying it's going to be Dana and Ray, but I, I don't think anyone's going to want to do. I, I mean Dana, it, it makes sense that you're going to want a common driveway here, right? I mean,
Correct, yes.
It's, it's, it's the proper development. I don't see who's going to, and it's not like there's a lot of expense to do that. It's not like you're building a, a roadway. It's really just a common driveway similar to what was done on, um, on the Oxbow Pet Shop situation. It's going to add value to those buildings to, to set them off as much as you can off, not to a certain degree.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disputing that this sounds like a good project. It, I'm just, it's the, it's just the pessimism in me that there's no guarantees. And I can envision the worst thing happening because I've seen it in other areas. So that, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm stating this, is that unfortunately, we can't put a condition on it and say, yeah, we'll definitely back you as long as you do this project. We can't do that. So that, but that is my, and I know at some point it's going to come true that we, well, it has before. We've had projects that are going to be one thing and they come out looking, they are completely something else. So that, that's why, um, the, you know, making these comments.
Understand.
Paul Revis, I know you asked me to unmute you again. Do you have anything to add?
I discussed this with Brian before he filed and I've recommended that it be zoned business so that another apartment building could be built there. And eventually the Knights of Columbus might be an apartment building. So it's not the request that was sought. They want to do general residence. Mr. Lowry is correct. As of right, they'll be able to do three A and R lots, 80 feet of frontage. Two driveways each, uh, right on the street. So there is no limit to that. Uh, there's no limitation to that. So, you know, if they want to do a common driveway, there's, there's, there's nothing to require that. It's going to be totally voluntary and then they would have to get a special permit, I guess, from the zoning board of appeals to do the common driveway. And then they're involved in doing the full blown designer view that they probably won't want to do. So I, I, this is a very difficult site. I would rather see it zoned business, zoned the Knights of Columbus business as well.
We're all for that, but I, I just didn't think that was what, um, people were going to want there.
Yeah, I, I think you're concerned about to push back at town meeting. And I, I understand that. And Brian was really underlying that for me.
And I think you're going to get it, to be honest with you, if you, if you try to do that.
And, and you can't, you can't zone it business at this point. You'd have to repetition because we've already started the process to restore lesser zoning, general residence. So we can't flip at the businesses at town meeting.
I, I, I know some names that are pretty strong on that and, uh, you know, um, that, you know, that's not, not where they want it to be on the business zone.
Right.
And, you know, and I, I've been doing this for 30 years and I tell you, if you, if you have neighbors that don't want a zoning change, it's very difficult to get a two-thirds vote at town meeting to make that happen.
D.B.I.C. on Albion Street, uh, that was zoned what? Um, general residence?
General residence, yeah.
The pet shop, yeah.
And that went to the ZBIA? Why did that into the ZBIA?
Because it, because that was this project. He had three lots. Um, they were all A and R lots, general residence. There was no rezon. And, um, and, and basically he looked at that, just like Dana's looking at it. He said, I've got a tough intersection. I could put, you know, three or six driveway cuts here. It's going to be a disaster for everybody. Let's do this in a tasteful manner. And the project came out great. Uh, with, and so he went to the zoning board for a special permit for common driveway fall.
Right. I remember the A and R plan. I don't remember what triggered it.
That was only an A and R plan before the planning board.
Right.
So, but I mean, Danny, you know, you're not, you have no problem going before the zoning board on, um, design review and what you're going to build.
No, not at all.
You do that in every city in town. We're not, we're not scared of that. Um, you know, I think we can make it a great project. I think it's going to fit really well there. Um, but you know what? I, I hear where the board's coming from. I hear Matt. I, I get it. Um, I get it.
I, I have to, um, interject. We've lost Bill. And he's back as Chris. And Bill, you don't have a, um, a microphone. So we need to keep a quorum for the meeting. Bill's getting some help on the technical side. We do have a couple of people from the town.
There he is, he's back.
And there's some comments from Joanne. So I want to address them too. Let me unmute. Bill, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm back in. The battery went dead.
Okay. I was wondering, I saw you disappear. I just wanted to make sure you, you're not missing anything.
Okay.
Okay. Did you have any comments on North Ave? I know you had a few. Do you have any others besides the drainage?
Um, no, they're going to be putting sidewalks and stuff in front, right?
Well, I know that's not their responsibility, but, um, the DPW did mention that there's plans for a sidewalk to run from the car dealerships down to Walcott.
Oh, okay. That's right.
And we'll wait to, to see, but that's what I heard from the DPW during a, a different meeting.
Okay. One question, who, uh, the DPW said they're going to be putting sidewalks in?
There's plans for sidewalks? They didn't say that they would own them. Um, and I have to look back in my notes to see who, who was there from DPW.
Well, who would be paying for these? Cause it seems like,
I've had conversations with, uh, with the zoning board member about those sidewalks. And they said that they were going to require them to be put in all at once for both projects. They just, we need to make sure they don't forget that.
Right. So the DPW comment was when the projects, the two apartment buildings, the second one now that's being completed, they're going to put the sidewalks in. But I don't know if that's extended down to Walcott or if it's just in front of those buildings.
Just in front of those buildings. And I don't know that there's any bonding or anything to hold to make sure they do that.
Well, if it's on their site plan, they have to do it.
Okay.
I, I don't recall it on their site plan, but we can check.
That's where anomalies would be.
I'd like to open it up. I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
Just back to that, I'm kind of curious. If, if they had planned to put sidewalks in there, they didn't make any accommodations for the curbs because the curbs all have to be ripped out. They're going to have to rip out their driveway. I mean, if that was the plan, they didn't do very good planning on it because they haven't set themselves up for it.
And they have to spend more money to do it because of the way they've done the curbing.
Correct.
I would like to open up to the public if there are any other comments from the board or from the town planner.
Do we have Bill DeVore?
Yes, he's back on. His name is now Chris.
That's his laugh, yes.
Yep, he's here. First comment that came from the planning board, um, Joanne from, if my memory serves me right, something Chestnut Street, I'm looking back in the notes, um, 51A Chestnut Street, Joanne Schooler. She had a couple of comments and some of them were addressed. Um, one that, um, Matt is making really good points about this. And the zoning, and we did cover that, meaning those two apartment buildings were zoned as resident, single residence, and then were changed, um, to business. It's a high traffic area with walkers along the lake. And Matt's right, the worst happened, um, right next door. The apartment buildings are ugly and too big. I don't think residents of the town want a bunch of apartment buildings all along North Ave. A development like the one over by 128 on Salem Street near the Linfield Market is better. Um, but even that may get pushed back at town meeting. So a few comments wrapped into there. Let's see, real view. That's the later one. Push this, let's see. Okay. And though about the height too. There's three stories on the first one and four stories on the second one. So, um, I would say probably about 40 feet high, just a guess. And closer to 50 feet on the four story. Once completed. Jake, uh, you have your hand raised. You are, um, Jake, I'm going to unmute. Go ahead, Jake.
I'm Jake Conley at Two Failing Street, which is right across the street from the Knights of Columbus. And I talked to Dana and Brian about this. And I think Brian hit the nail on the head that I would definitely be highly against another building like that, uh, continuing down the street. I don't really care whether it's single family or duplexes, but I like their plan for a little cul-de-sac, make it more like a neighborhood instead of a giant apartment building, keep going down North Ave. So I'm not opposed to what they're doing. Um, I highly oppose changing it to business just to have it be a budding as a business. Cause then they could really do what they originally wanted is to put up an apartment building. Financially, obviously that would be the best case for them, but as Brian advised them, that's not what the neighborhood wants. So I'm, I'm fine with the, what they're proposing.
Thank you, Jake. Any other comments from the public? Brian and Dana, anything to add to the comments?
I think, I, I think we said it all. I think, you know, I think, you know, I, I respect, uh, I respect where Matt's coming from. I get it. Um, and, um, you know, but, you know, I will say, you know, I mean, you know, I've worked with Dana and Ray before. I think when they say they're going to do something, they're going to do it. And, you know, they didn't buy this to flip it. They bought it. You know, they have means, they know what they're doing. This is not a big project for them. It's something that they can, they can handle quite efficiently. And, and I don't think, I don't think anyone's going to look at this, that they're going to want three duplexes with six driveways. And, and I also question whether you're going to be able to get the curb cut openings to do six driveways. That's another issue. So I just think that, um, um, it's gonna, it's, and I, and I can tell you, you're not going to end up with a cul-de-sac if you end up with three single family homes there. They're just going to be not the most expensive homes and it's just going to be cookie cutters right in a row. And I think it's going to be better for the town, better planning to allow this change to happen and, and to fit it right and develop it properly. So, but I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be back in a couple of weeks on this one too, Mr. Chairman. We can talk about it some more.
Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks for the, um, public contribution and thanks for all the comments from the board. Obviously there's, um, a couple of good options to discuss here. Back open on, or, or remain open for the 28th as well, our next planning board meeting. Okay. Up to share for a second. How's everybody doing?
We're here.
Yep, thank you.
That's been tired.
Yep.
Bill too. He's usually in bed by now too, so.
Yeah. Okay, controls. I'm going to share. Okay. We've concluded the public, public hearing items on the agenda tonight. Um, thanks again for all the input and it's a, it's a big discussion with town meeting pushed a little further. I know we, we have a chance to talk about it at our next meeting as well and with elections being pushed. So I, I hope to have more, um, public input. Uh, other, other business, definitive plans, endorsement for Wildwood. Uh, this is continued.
Yeah, that's just an agenda item, Mr. Chairman, because it's already been approved and the decision's been done. It's just a matter of the endorsements. And again, a COVID-19 casualty. It's just a matter of the endorsements and again, a COVID-19 casualty, if you will, so.
Logistically, how will we do this? Could, could I propose a motion that the chairman endorse the plan on behalf of the entire board?
I don't know if that's going to work, Max. I think at the registry, you know this better than me. Yeah, I think they're going to be looking for a majority of the signatures. Wouldn't they?
Well, not necessarily because other towns, like the planning director will sign, you know, will sign off in lieu of the entire board, so.
Is that only on A and R plans, old Matt?
I had, I had authority to do that at another position. And what happened was the planning board signed a, an affidavit that was recorded at the Registry of Deeds that gave the town planner the power to sign anything for the planning board. But I don't know that you want to do that. Can the plans be ferried around to every board member for signatures?
I can arrange that. You know, I could leave them at board members' houses and then just pick them up later in the day on, you know, on a sunny day, leave them outside so they don't have to have contact.
They have to be in quarantine for 14 days, so.
The plans?
Yeah. Isn't that the way it works?
But they're plastic, Matt, they're plastic. You got to spray them with Lysol.
Yeah, well, paper's 24 hours, I believe, and plastic is seven days.
I'm just kidding. I don't, I don't have an issue with, that would work too. I'm just trying to make it easier for
Thank you.
everyone involved here if possible, so.
Well, what, what are we talking for? Maybe a drop date on this. How far can we push it?
Well, the problem I have with this is, and again, Matt will understand this, this is registered land, so I've got to get these plans into the land court. But they're not open either, right, Matt? I mean.
No, we're submitting things to the land court, so.
Okay.
Are you submitting plans to them?
Yeah.
Were you overnighting them in? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I see two options. One option, Matt does make a motion, I sign them for everybody. But that would be one. The other option could be, Brian, I could get the plans from you and I can go to Matt's house, I can sign mine, bring him to Matt's house, have his sign with his own pen, and then bring it to Bill's house and have him sign it, and then bring it back to you.
I always defer to the town planner.
Well, I just, this is just two options.
Yeah, so Paul, what do you want to do?
I think the second option, Bill's option, is a good option.
Okay.
So we'll need, there's two sets of plans to be signed.
Yeah, and I have them both.
And you have to get the town clerk's endorsement first.
Okay, I'll do that, Bill, and then I'll get in touch with you to arrange to leave them off with you.
Please do. And Brian, feel free to text me.
Okay.
My number should be at the end of most emails. If you don't have it, send me an email and I'll send it back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think texting would be a better way to, I'm checking my other email, but not as frequent as my text alerts me.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Topics not anticipated by the chair. I believe, Brian, before you do go, we have a couple of other things to discuss.
Yes, so I was looking for the chair to be able to endorse a couple of decisions on, on the Osiphe-Glendale subdivision, zero Osiphe-Glendale extension. There were some minor changes in the decision that I sent out. I redlined and made, and sent a clean copy. And I think I addressed all the boards' concerns on that. So I'd like the chair to be able to sign that so Paul can clock that in or get it clocked into the town clerk's office.
And I reviewed and I agree what we addressed, what we brought up as comments were addressed. Matt and Bill, do you want to review that? Or did you get a chance to review?
Yeah, I reviewed it, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay. Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, so I can coordinate that with you, Mr. Chairman, and maybe, you know, I'll email it to you, you can print it out and sign it, and then I'll get a, drop it at the town planner's office for him to clock it.
Yeah, unless you want to drop it off with the Wildwood.
Okay, yep.
Or I can come and pick it up, however you want to do that.
I'll coordinate with you, I'll coordinate with you.
Yes, yep.
Yep. And then the last one was the mansion.
I'm sorry, do we need to make a motion that the, we're allowing the board to sign on, allowing the chair to sign on behalf of the board?
That would be fine.
All right. So I'll make a motion to authorize the board to sign, I'm sorry, to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board for revised decisions for Glendale Ave Extension Wakefield, Mass.
I'll second it.
Does it need to be zero Osiphe? Or is that fine?
It's fine.
Okay.
We know the intent.
Okay.
And it, it's definitive subdivision plan entitled Glendale Ave Extension Wakefield, Mass. Is the, is that, is what the, what the decision says on top anyway, so we think we're all set.
Okay. All right, I heard Bill second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I got visual and audio, thank you.
In the final matter, Mr. Chairman, was the Mansion Road decision.
Yes.
That definitive decision, which I wrote and submitted, and the clock is ticking on that too, unfortunately.
Right, I reviewed and I'm comfortable with it. Matt and Bill?
Yeah, yeah, I was fine with it.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that the board authorizes the chair to sign the revised, what is?
Ten Mansion Road.
Ten Mansion, we're calling it revised conditions or what is?
No, that was, that was the definitive subdivision approval map with the front, with the waiver on the frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to authorize him to sign the, to sign the definitive subdivision plan of Ten Mansion Road, Wakefield, Mass, dated January 7, 2020. And any other associated documents required?
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town planner.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian, I'm glad this is working out.
Yeah, I love, I like this format. I can, now I can go, can I leave now and go eat dinner?
I ate dinner before, sorry.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good night, be safe, stay safe and healthy.
You too.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay.
My family.
You too, Bill.
So I have a question. So Linda wasn't here to actually take physical notes. How are we going to, how are we going to handle that? How are we going to document this?
Well, this meeting's being recorded. And the recording I will have downloaded to a jump drive and I will deliver to the town planner. So Paul, I'm not sure, is there anything else we need to do for a record?
You could email it to Linda and she can transcribe it.
Okay, that's a good comment.
We could do, we could do that or, you know, barring that too, we could basically just have a set of notes, one page that says, see, you know, see the recording, just so there's something.
I don't know, I don't know how this recording would ever be stored.
And I always want to have a, some kind of backup trail. So if people are going through looking, oh, I see the notes for this one, I see the notes here, and then suddenly the notes disappear, at least someone would see one set of notes that said, see this recording, you know, see whatever.
I think we need written minutes.
That's fine, is that what other boards are doing?
Reporting is supplemental. It can't be the minutes.
Right.
We have to have minutes.
I have, I have a drive that's a gigabyte. And I'm hoping a portable drive is enough size. I know I've recorded Zoom meetings that have lasted an hour, and they've been hefty, they've been about 100, 150 megabytes. So I'll see what this one turns into.
We're approaching three.
We also have the chat that's recorded as well, that can be saved.
I, I understand all that. I'm, one of my frustrations is we're not getting much direction on, you know, items like this from any town officials. Is there a consistent policy with other boards that are doing this? Or is everyone winging it?
I can ask, what I can do is I can ask Steve Mayo and Julie Galvin. She, when she was at our meeting, I mean, we had this discussion about some type of remote working meetings. So what do we do with the recording? So maybe they will know. Also, maybe it's something that I should ask Todd and Sharon, since they're the ones setting up these Zoom meetings.
I would, I would start with, with, you know, maybe Tom and see. I wouldn't, if you start asking everyone, you might get three different opinions and they want everything
Tom Mullen?
Different places, yeah. I mean, there's got to be some legal precedence here.
Minutes.
I'm sorry, Paul, was that?
I think Tom Mullen's going to tell you, you have to have written minutes.
Written notes, okay.
Written minutes.
Written minutes, which is Linda's job, so maybe that's something that she can.
All the motions, all of, all the motions, the seconds, the votes, every item, all it's got to be recorded on paper.
Right. And I know we've had this discussion in the past about our note-taking and how posted to the approval, posted to the websites and all that. Okay, I'll send a message to Tom Mullen, Town Council, and copy Paul Revis to ask what we should do about the recording and record-taking of our online Zoom meetings. And then I want to separately ask Todd and Sharon what the other town committees and meetings are doing. Like what, what's town council doing for recording theirs? Like where does the recording go?
They, they have written minutes and they adopt them. If you look at their packet from the last minute meeting, they're in the front of the packet.
Right.
They're all typed out.
Okay.
So, so does this mean that for the remainder of our, of our Zoom meetings that Linda won't be here, she'll be doing it after the fact? Or what's, again, does the secretary need to be there?
I have no answer for you on that.
I'll, I'll email her and find out what her intention is. To me, as long as they get reported accurately, recorded accurately, and she can do the transcript and we can review them and approve them.
Well, she may not have a laptop at home and the capability of Zooming.
Right. She might not have a laptop at home that could take a three gig record, or I'm sorry, 300 meg video of this.
I wouldn't want to choke up my machine with it either.
Right, well, I'll test that and see. I can also ask my, my business to see what we do with all the stored recorded videos, if they go onto a separate drive or how that works. Maybe that's something the town can look at or, I don't know. I'll start with Mr. Mullen tomorrow.
I've always wished that there was some software package that you could just play the recording and it would type it itself.
There is.
Like a dictation.
There are, there is software that does that, but I haven't found one that does it well. But transcribing videos is definitely a lucrative business. All the online learning through LinkedIn and a few other companies, everything's transcribed. So as the speaker is talking, you can see, read the text as well. And I'm sure there's, there isn't a secretary or a clerk typing that all out. I believe it's voice recognition and probably gone through for accuracy after, before it's posted.
Is that something else you can buy with Zoom?
I'm not sure. I can, I can ask our IT department at my office and see if they can recommend, if they, or if they know of something.
All right, the only other thing I would suggest that we ask people is when they, when they do log on, that they use their full name. So we know basically who's, who's calling in. And, I mean, I don't know if that's something we can ask. I would prefer to have names and not just phone numbers or blanks.
Right. Okay. I ran out of space taking notes, Matt.
Use the side.
Thanks.
Remember, there's six, there's six sides to a piece of paper, so.
Yes. And four of them can cut you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of bills. I'll mail them around to you so you can sign them and mail it back to me, I guess would be the best.
So you mean like mail through the US Postal or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They have bills from the Wakefield Daily item for the legal ads.
Do those need to go directly to Mr. Demore? Demore?
Well, the tradition has been we have all members sign them.
Okay.
So I can send it to Mr. Demore and he can see if he can get the other signatures. That would be terrific.
He's on here as Chris right now, so he doesn't have his full name.
I don't see, I see Chris.
Is it, again, is it possible for the board to authorize Bill to sign on our behalf along with Paul's approval? Just, you know, just to make things a little bit easier?
We should figure that out, yes.
Should I add that to my question to Mr. Mullen?
Uh, no, that would be a question to the town accountant. How we would like, how we'd like to set that up.
And Paul, can you take care of that question?
I will.
Thank you.
I think I'll first get Bill Demore's signature and then see if I can't just hustle that through.
Yeah.
I do have an electronic signature that I use for other things. I have to, for electronic stamps, for drawings, I have my stamp and my signature that is approval. For, for example, the town in Needham, I submitted permit drawings through them with my architectural stamp and electronic signature.
I can send the cover page around for signature like that.
With my notary seal?
Just, just your signature is sufficient.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, this has been a decent experience. I know my screen, I wish I had another monitor to have up because it's just loaded. I know you can't see all the software, but between the participants' window, the chat window, the controls for Zoom, the drawing controls for each program that pops up, and I have about 14 different windows open in the background. So luckily, I didn't expose my desktop or anything else. I think this worked out well, but I'm open to feedback to what you guys think. You know, besides the whole asking for mute and unmute.
That was a problem.
I know, and I kept clicking on your, to unmute, and it would go, it wouldn't change. I'm not sure why.
What, what happened with me, if I mute, if I muted myself and I clicked unmute?
Yes.
A box would pop up that says that you needed to do it. So when you, when you did it, a box popped up. If I didn't get to that quick enough and it disappeared, it wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to unmute myself.
No, so Paul.
It's like a two-step process.
So Paul, when I click on mute, I'm going to do it right now, I think you get a box that pops up. So now if I unmute. So now, if I unmute you, a box should pop up to allow you now to click on that. That happening?
It did happen.
Okay.
It's just I wasn't quick enough sometimes.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know what to look for.
And I, on this host end, I don't get to see that, so that's a good comment, so.
I think when I'm typing in on chat, it's sitting on top of that, and I don't see that.
Okay. That makes sense.
When I'm repeatedly asking you to unmute me, I've got chat box on top of that.
Right, and I'm clicking on the unmute, and it, the, the box that pops up on your end isn't seen, so understood. I think the comment about explaining the participants' page to open it and to have the, the raise the hand. I know Brian McGrail, Jake, and one other person raised their hand on the, on the participant page. Paul, you did as well, so that worked.
You have to explain where that is, that it's on the bottom toolbar.
On the bottom right, if I understand correctly.
It's on the bottom and the left.
Oh, it's the bottom on the left, okay.
Yeah, it's in the black toolbar. It says participants with little people figures.
Right, like, says number four, four participants?
Right, you have to click on that first before the other thing shows up on the side.
Okay.
It's unfortunate, I guess your screen is different than mine.
I don't have the option to raise my hand or, or where that shows, because as the host, and just so you guys know, Sharon provides me, the town provides me with a host number, and it took me a little bit to find out where to place that. Because before I typed in the host, and if something happened, and I had to give the host privileges, I would have to go in and, like Matt, if I had to assign you as the host, I would relinquish my duties as the host, and you would have to control the participants and the hands and everything, too. But there's a code, there's like a six-digit code that I get that she, Sharon asked me not to share that unless I had to give up the host role. I don't know if that keeps any Zoom bombing from happening, but it could.
It certainly mutes everybody.
Yeah, well, it gives me control to mute everybody, and then to control that you can't be unmuted unless I unmute you. And this is a small meeting. I know I was in a meeting with 120 people the other day, and there was a waiting room. You had to sit in the waiting room until they approved you to come in. And then once you're in, they had breakout sessions, so you could break out into different groups to discuss and then come back. I mean, that's, I don't think we'll have to deal with that.
Town meeting is gonna be a really interesting adventure.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm second.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.